Good evening. We're starting early tonight because we have a lot on the agenda. The appointed time has arrived for the agenda. 5:30, January 17, 2024. Meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board here at Town Hall at the White Room, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. Welcome, everyone. We're being broadcast live on Local Channel 8 and streamed live on the town of Mashpee website, Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. The reason we started early tonight is we're going to talk about the local comprehensive plan update, and we're going to continue review and discussion of the draft implementation table. Mary is going to talk now on housing production.
So... Why don't you take one and pass one down? This one's printed out in color. So I think there are, let's see, 15 chapters?
They've been reduced. They're reduced from the 98 Plan, but I think it's... Because some have been consolidated, so...
So just as kind of a background, housing is a chapter. It's not necessarily affordable housing, like the housing production plan that we're working on. And what I did was looked back at what was in our current LCP, what was in our HPP, and what was, you know, commented on, public comment, the survey, et cetera. And redlined this and added to it. So if you want, I can just go through. There's goals, policies, and then actions. So how I did it was every action should tie back to a policy, and every policy should tie back to a goal. I do it when you double-check, I go backwards. But anyways, you guys let me know. So there are five goals that I'm proposing. One is to ensure that Mashpee residents have access to safe, decent, affordable, and diverse types of housing options. Maybe that should say, "Have access to safe, decent, affordable housing and diverse types of housing options." I think I'm missing a word.
Ensure that Mashpee residents have access to safe, decent, affordable, and diverse...
Do we want to check as we go, Mary? To see if everybody likes it?
Yeah, I'd love that.
Okay, does anybody not like that? She took out "current" and "future," which I think is good.
Ensure that sustainable and environmentally sensitive practices are integrated into all housing development decisions to create a safer, more resilient, healthier housing stock and populace.
All in favor of that?
Yep.
I'll just leave it. Any objection or any comments? No comments, okay?
Ensure fair and equal opportunity in housing.
Any objections? No objections.
And then create affordable housing to meet the state's 10% mandate.
Any objections? None.
Oh, and one to the reporter. Sorry. And I... And then a new one. Create housing that maintains Mashpee small-town character. And the reason why was because we had actions, H19 and H20, that didn't have a goal. So I just put... I made a goal to match 19, Action 19 and 20.
How do you define that? I'm just curious, small-town character. I mean, I think we all... We live in a small town. It's a small town. I'm just curious. How would you... How would the people reading that define small-town? I'm just curious.
That's a good question. Because we always say "small-town character," but what is that? How do we articulate that?
Sometimes I don't want small-town to act small, act small-thinking.
Act petty.
You know, you don't want to make yourself look insignificant.
Right.
I... We go back and forth between rural and small. I forget what we last settled on. I like rural. You know, where there's trees, you can see, you know, your natural resources.
A rural also sends a message, too. That's not... So I like small-town.
Well, yeah. It kind of implies that you're farmers, you know? But really, we're not farmers. So I think we went with small-town.
I'm okay. I just wanted to throw it out for comment.
I think...
Is it in other places in the LCP?
Small-town?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's in our vision statement.
Yeah. So I think ultimately, I think the goal is fine. And I think generally, as you evaluate strategies for housing production, like ones that are identified in the HPP and also the LCP, it comes down to building types and density schemes. So you're probably not going to prioritize or incentivize the production of housing that is eight stories.
Right.
And... And, you know, and it's really about scale and density.
Yeah. I'm fine. I just, when you want to do all the things you want to do, like go to 10%, that's not thinking small. That's actually thinking quite large.
Is it? If you only have to build 37 a year?
370 total.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it. I just wanted to discuss it for a minute.
Yep.
There's 10%. That's a fairy tale. You're never going to reach 10%.
I think we can reach 10%. I think we absolutely can.
Every time they pay 100 homes, 10 of them are affordable, but 90 more add it to the stock of the housing, so...
Well, under 40B, but 370 units isn't too far outside of what is possible through just the town's pipeline of projects.
37 a year for 10 years.
Depending on existing environmental constraints. We can do 10%, and I think we can do better.
All right.
Yeah, and remember, the denominator changes only every 10 years.
All right.
It goes with the census.
Right.
So actually, when you say "create housing," Mary, that's saying which maintains small-town character. You are saying, "Let's not make this an megalopolis or something big that it's not going to be."
I mean, Thalmud is looking at 900 units on, is it...
Rock Hill?
Sandwich Row. Sandwich Row. 900 units.
I've seen some states going in their property October that day.
Good.
All right, so...
100?
Yep. No? Next set is policies. So these are things that town-wide we should consider whenever the town is making decisions. So promote redevelopment of strip development and gray fields into compact, walkable, village-center-style and pedestrian-friendly mixed-use neighborhoods that provide a variety of housing types.
What did you mean by "single use" in the original language?
Commercial-only or residential-only.
Oh.
It's not a mix. It doesn't allow a mixture of uses, which is how I would describe...
Oh, single, okay.
Using jargon, how I would describe your C2 zoning districts, for example. That are your priority redevelopment areas. Whereas, there's no walkability. It is only one use, which is generally commercial. I mean, you'll have a mixture of uses in that there's a retail business next to a restaurant, but there's no mixture of uses in that there's no industrial or residential incorporated. So that's what that is intended to describe, is the existing condition of primarily your C2 zoning districts.
Are you happy with taking them out?
It doesn't...
Okay.
I'm not... But can I... Can you remind me what a gray field is?
A gray field is something that's underutilized. It's a developed... It's a developed property. It's underutilized. It's shabby. It might be blighted. It might be a hotel that's never used. It could be...
Is it abandoned, or is it...
Sometimes abandoned, vacant. It's everything from kind of like looking kind of old, you know? There's no plans for sprucing it up to blighted, you know? Condemned.
That might be something most people don't understand.
Might we just say "underutilized properties"?
Yeah, rather using not words that...
Well, the state is trying to coin that term, gray fields.
Why don't we do this? Like, promote redevelopment of strip developments, and "underutilized properties," parentheses, "gray fields."
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor of that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Underutilized. Okay.
Policy H2, maximize the town's potential to provide subsidized housing inventory eligible deed restricted affordable units. So anyways, I had... I don't... I don't know if that really is necessary because we have the goal of create affordable housing to meet the state's 10% mandate.
Let's talk about that. I'm not... It's not registering.
Yep.
Maximize the town's potential to provide subsidized housing inventory eligible deed restricted.
Housing. It's missing a word.
I don't know.
Because it continued on, "affordable units," by using town-owned property. But I put town... Use of town-owned land under an action.
I might suggest that I think the crux of this policy, as originally proposed, was about establishing as a priority the use of town-owned land.
Yes.
For the production of housing. I think that's been restated through the HPP and remains a priority, and this would be the quote-unquote "pipeline of projects." And so I think there are specific actions that would support that policy, which gets at the goal of the 10%. And the specific actions would be like completing the traffic study for 209 Old Barnstable Road, for completing the feasibility study of the VFW site, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So...
I have H31. Identify town-owned land or acquire land which is suitable for the development of affordable housing, which is eligible for the shy affordable housing inventory. So it's kind of like I took Policy H2 and I made it Action H31.
That's only town-owned land. That has no restrictions on it, like on the...
Right. So I guess our policy should be that, you know... A policy would be to, as the town looks at town-owned land, the use for town-owned land, that affordable housing is considered. That's what the policy is.
It follows with "which are suitable." So "which are suitable" meaning...
Right.
Yeah.
What I asked.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it covers the whole paragraph.
Right. But we need to link it back to a policy, which I think the policy for the whole town is to always, when considering the use of town-owned land, that affordable housing is considered for it.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Is that the connection?
The connection is...
Affordable.
Yes. That town-owned land, when the town considers the use for town-owned land, that affordable... That housing, affordable housing is considered under that review. Do you know what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying. But I kind of maintain that Policy H2 as originally proposed is appropriate.
Oh, okay.
So we should... Should we keep what's written?
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Any objections? Keep, including the strikeout.
Affordable units by using town-owned property. Okay. Yep. All right.
Can I touch on that, though?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
This... I feel like the strikeout, the affordable units by town-owned property, place use of town-owned land. So it would just read, "Maximize the town's potential to provide subsized housing inventory eligible deed restricted units."
Yep. This was a comment from one of our workshops.
Read, Mary, read how it's going to be...
Maximize the town's potential to provide shy eligible deed restricted units by using town-owned property. I would have to say for affordable housing development.
I'm okay with that.
By considering, because by using suggests you're not doing anything else.
All I'm suggesting is that I think Policy H2, without the strikeout, says exactly that.
Oh, okay. So maximize the town's potential to provide shy eligible deed restricted affordable units by using town-owned property.
Yeah.
Just keep it... All right.
Does that restrict the town only to...
No.
On those properties?
Prior... The potential.
It like said, they wanted to put a fire station.
Obviously, you're not bound to it, but it says, "We want to consider affordable housing if feasible and the opportunity works."
Maximize...
Notwithstanding other priorities.
So are you good with it?
Yes.
Okay.
Everyone for it.
Ms. Chrissy?
She's ill.
Okay.
But she is watching.
Hi, Chrissy. All right. Policy H3, expand the diversity of housing types to provide all residents... Why did I strike that? With appropriate shelter.
I think you should keep it.
I think so, too.
All those in favor?
I...
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. H4, diligently and efficiently monitor and enforce inclusionary zoning requirements and provide professional oversight for any locally-run housing programs and nurture relationships with the community.
Would you explain what either one of you, "inclusionary zoning requirements" exactly means? I did look it up, and I've forgotten.
With community housing partners.
Inclusionary zoning as a policy is a policy whereas generally it requires a set aside of units that are restricted to a certain income level within a market rate development.
Okay.
So you have this in... You have provisions that are inclusionary zoning in your bylaw, whereas for a cluster subdivision, for example...
Yeah.
10 lots created, one lot must be affordable. That would be an inclusionary requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's really about inclusion of income levels that aren't...
Yes. That's what it means. And disparate income levels.
So I have a note here. Should we place this under actions or keep it as a policy? I think this is more of an action.
That's always the problem. Sometimes you can't quite say which it is.
No, I would think it's an action.
Okay. I think it's an action.
I think that's fine.
All right. So H4 will go under actions. Okay. Policy H5, incentivize the production of ADUs.
Any objection?
Nope.
Okay.
Good.
H6, implement sustainable building practices for all construction and redevelopment.
Any objection?
No.
H7, minimize housing vulnerabilities to climate change and natural disasters.
Isn't that kind of what...
No, sustainable practices are like energy efficiency.
Yeah. I mean, isn't it almost like Policy 6? You do sustainable building practices.
Sometimes I merge together, but sustainability practices is like energy efficiency.
Yeah, I think Policy H6 is really about energy, and then the latter is really about resilience.
Okay.
Structural resilience.
Don't build in a velocity zone, right?
Yeah.
Now you're...
All those in favor? Policy 7?
Mm-hmm.
Good?
Yep. Preserve existing year-round housing stock for year-round use.
How do you preserve it?
So those are in action steps. Like, you can... You can have an incentive, like a program where you give a tax break to people who rent their homes year-round.
What they do in Barnestown recently, they... If you put your house perma, you know, you won't sell it. It has to be affordable. They give you a big tax break and stuff, you know? And that keeps that house always to be affordable, you know? They guarantee the sound...
You could have like a mortgage assistance program. So people... You have assistance for people to prevent their foreclosure. You could limit the number of short-term rentals in town.
Yeah.
Whether these are effective tools or not.
It says "preserve," that suggests that we have it.
Yeah. So what... What, like, what is it? 63%? No, more.
It's more.
70% of our units are used year-round?
Yeah, about that.
So we just have to make sure that policy, like, town-wide, we try to keep at that percentage. Sometimes if there's a buy down... You can have a buy-down program.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So if there's a lot of houses for sale, you can, with trust money, affordable housing trust money, you can buy it down and deed restricted affordable, and then deed restricted for year-round use.
Okay. Any objection? No? Good?
Create workforce housing primarily linked to Mashpee-based businesses.
Like that.
That sounds good.
I think we got to figure that out. Prevent evictions, relocation, and loss of housing by Mashpee residents. So I thought... I didn't know if that should stay as a policy or...
Can I ask you a question of H9?
Yep.
So I think I understand the impetus for linking workforce housing to existing businesses, but I just wondered if... It kind of implies that the employer is going to be the creator of the housing, which is happening more and more. But I just wonder if it might be better to say, "Create workforce housing to support Mashpee-based businesses."
To support rather than limited to the creator being the employer?
Yes.
Because how many employers can create? Only a few.
I... That's my question.
You think that's strong enough?
I do, yeah.
I think it should be clear that it's to the benefit of Mashpee businesses.
Yeah, I agree with that premise. I just... I don't want to imply in the policy that we're only going to prioritize or incentivize the production of workforce housing if the employer is the one required to finance and construct it. I think many are starting to evaluate that, but that does pose a challenge for them. So I think we should have the policy make very clear that we want to provide workforce housing to support Mashpee business in the local economy. Then we're not going to expect them to be the producers of it.
Okay. So to support Mashpee-based businesses.
Because realistically, there aren't that many employers that can afford to do workforce housing. We don't have that many willow bands here.
I really had that as a... Tagged as a town policy that if... I mean, we're not at that point yet. But if we hit town-owned land, like, maybe that parcel of land that's so big, like 65 acres. I know there's some easements on it and stuff. But, you know, if you get going on a site, you develop a site, maybe phase one is 100% affordable housing. But if it's on town-owned land, maybe phase two should be 25%
Yeah.
affordable housing and 75% market rate. And I'm convinced... I don't know if I'm right or not. I'm convinced that those market rate units, the town could say upon initial lease-up, they have to be for Mashpee workers, or a preference for them.
You can't do... You cannot do a preference like that, yeah?
Yes.
With certainty.
Because they're not going on the shy. Do you know what I mean? Those market rate units don't have that local preference strictness that the state... These would be our local units. Because I think Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard does that. They provide housing for their schoolteachers and stuff like that.
Yeah.
So I think Mashpee could do that.
In the medical center here in Mashpee, rent it, in Mashpee, that's where their workers...
Yeah.
Last year, because they couldn't find a place.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Can we put a number on it? Like, if a boy has 20 people, he has to find houses, but anything under that?
That would be interesting.
You know, I mean...
I wouldn't do it as a policy in this plan, but as you evaluate actions thereafter to support this policy, it's something you could consider.
Okay.
Makes sense.
So H10, I didn't know if that was a policy. I guess that's a policy.
I'm...
We don't even know how that works.
What?
That one there. Prevent evictions, relocation, and loss of housing by Mashpee residents.
So that... So we used to have a rental assistance program through our services.
I mean, I do think that there are actions that could support this policy, such as by supporting local agencies that provide services or with rental assistance or heating assistance.
Yeah.
I think there are actions under the umbrella of this policy.
Okay.
My opinion.
Okay. So keep it as a policy? And we want to make sure that we have this policy. Like, you wouldn't want to...
We have to have it. But, I mean, how does it...
But we wouldn't want to... For example, let's say there was a gray field that was in terrible shape, that there was people living in it, right? You'd... This would... By adopting this policy, you'd be encouraged to relocate those people in Mashpee. Do you know what I mean? What if the town ever bought an occupied building, right? The policy is to make sure that the people that are living there now don't lose their housing. You have to come up with a relocation plan.
Okay. Any objection to 10? No?
H11, minimize or mitigate the impacts of seasonal housing and short-term rental on the local housing market.
Any objection?
No.
Okay.
Regularly audit Mashpee's zoning bylaw to ensure that land-use regulations are not in conflict and/or appropriately incentivizing the patterns of development redevelopment that is desired by the community. Is that a policy or an action?
Well, I think the audit is the action.
Okay.
Actually, I actually think... Well, as a policy, you would do this regularly. It could go in either way. It really could.
I think it's a policy, but...
Okay. We'll keep it.
Okay.
In conflict with and/or are appropriately incentivized.
We're missing a word, Lynn?
Right?
Regularly audit...
Conflict with...
...the land use regulations. Starting with...
And/or are appropriately incentivized.
Add the word "are."
And...
Are...
Are. And strike the "or." Aren't in conflict with and are...
I think "and/or."
Are.
That is quite confusing. It's a bit of a mouthful.
Yeah.
Read it as it will be rewritten again, please.
Evan, you take that one.
Regular... What did you ask, Karen?
Read it again.
Read the corrections.
All right. So as I heard the corrections, I just... It is... I think it's grammatically correct, but a mouthful. Regularly audit Mashpee zoning bylaw Regularly audit Mashpee zoning bylaw to ensure that land use regulations aren't in conflict with and/or are appro...
And...
Are appropriately ins...
Incentivizing.
And are.
And...
And/or are.
And/or are.
That's strike the or.
Get rid of the or.
And/or are.
Everybody in that boat.
Regularly audit Mashpee zoning bylaw to ensure that land use regulations aren't in conflict with the patterns of development and re, that's, yeah, the patterns of redevelopment, the, of development and redevelopment that is desired by the community. Regularly audit Mashpee zoning bylaw to ensure that land use regulations aren't in conflict with pattern, the patterns of development or redevelopment that is desired by the community. There's a whole bunch of words in there that are irrelevant.
So you wanna take, you wanna strike and/or are appropriately incentivizing?
Yes, cause this is saying, if the development pattern is inconsistent with local needs in the future, you should reevaluate the bylaw and make changes accordingly. Regularly audit Mashpee zoning bylaw to ensure that land use regulations aren't in conflict with the patterns of development and redevelopment that is desired by the community.
That's much better.
Yeah, that's much better.
Okay, all those for that?
Yes.
Yes.
Thirteen, encourage joint housing efforts with the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe so that displaced tribal citizens have the opportunity to return home to Mashpee or stay in Mashpee.
Fine.
Or should we just stop it right after Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, period? Encourage joint housing efforts with...
Yeah.
The Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, period. Okay. New, H thirteen, increase the town's capacity to create affordable housing. So that links back to, cause, and one of our action steps is to have a staff person.
Okay, so that's, that's...
And there was no, there was no policy to link it back to. Policy, H fourteen, create year-round housing. Same thing, there were some actions that had nothing, no policy to link back to. Fifteen, work to resolve conflicts between housing and the degradation of groundwater, drinking water and open waters.
Good. Any objection?
I just need Evan to read that one carefully.
Policy, H fifteen, work to resolve conflicts between housing, housing needs and the degradation of groundwater, drinking water, or open waters, I just think you missed the word needs.
That's the HPP.
Hmm?
That's the HPP.
That was a lo, there was a long discussion yesterday at the Affordable Housing Committee about housing and water and conflicts that causes.
Yeah, so I, I would suggest work to resolve conflicts between housing needs and the degradation of groundwater, drinking water.
Housing needs?
Yes.
Yeah.
Our need is, the housing issue automatically implies supply needs to be increased.
Housing needs, yes.
Which translates to greater population, which translates to more pollution, so we need to reconcile this.
Yeah.
All in favor of that?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
Don't forget to renumber everything, cause you've taken out H four.
Okay.
Reading through and going through ma, many weeks now, the idea of a housing plan is to increase, uh, well, let's say, in, increase affordable workforce housing, whatever, but the numerator of that ra, ratio, you haven't touched the numerator. There's so many buildable lots for single family by right, and there's nothing in your housing plan to minimize that effect, which will reduce the shy values or...
Right.
Ratio. So the, my point is, should there be something in the housing plan that says, let's not promote single-family housing, let's minimize it? Now, that goes against, you know, I bought a lot twenty-five years ago, now I wanna build a house, and there's no incentive or disincentive for me to do that, yet it will help the water, pollution, the lakes, the traffic, and increase more affordable housing, the ratio in, in town. Is there, I, this is a discussion, how can we, is there a way of controlling the numerator on that fraction?
I mean, I, I think with the housing production plan, I think some of the actions contained in this plan get exactly to that point. Eighty-two percent of the housing stock is single-family. Um, we're saturated with single-family.
And, and increasing.
That's why all of the, I'd say, the vast majority of, if not all, of the policies in this document and the HPP and the actions to support those policies are focusing on primarily building types that aren't single-family dwellings. So we're not going out there and saying...
You can't build.
But we're, we're suggesting a desire to incentivize the production of something else, along with inclusionary zoning criteria and other criteria to affect the numerator.
Ignoring the elephant in the room.
I agree.
Mm-hmm.
And...
Didn't Minnesota like, yeah.
So we could consider, and I will suggest this, we haven't discussed this as a board, but you could establish a policy whereas it states to discourage the pro, the further growth of single-family dwelling production.
But, you know, out of, all these fine people here and the housing production plan committees and so, nobody has raised that issue to my knowledge, and I think it's a major issue.
It's always, it's always been promote housing diversity rather than prohibit...
Right.
Single-family homes.
It's just a different way of saying it.
I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of businesses and trades that depend on single-family homes.
I, I know, I know the, the point, but if you're trying to bring home the point of that ratio, improving our five percent going towards ten percent might, might be possible, you're missing a key factor in that ratio.
I agree with you completely.
If we continue to focus all over, focus on, and less on single-family, that would speak for itself.
Isn't this a zoning problem, though?
Yeah, so I, I agree with Rob completely and totally, and I think all the zoning strategies that are contemplated in each of these documents are designed, are intended to affect change in exactly the issue you've identified. Um, so absent explicitly expressing a desire to restrict or disincentivize further single-family production, we're placing a lot of weight behind incentivizing or otherwise inspiring the production of missing middle. So I think we cover it, and I agree with you, you're one hundred percent right.
I just had to put it on the floor, that's all.
I think that's well taken.
I sleep with snipes.
Sleep, I'm with you, man.
It would be, it would be difficult. I wouldn't wanna do that, but I do think we could re-emphasize what we're trying to say.
Look what we're doing in the HPP, we're not talking about single-family. We are stating what we wanna do, which means we're not stating about that, but it's implicit that we're not going for single-family homes.
I mean, I think if you recall, there was a strategy in the HPP that was about reducing law sizes to promote single, uh, small starter homes, and we decided that that was contrary to the goals you identified through your engagement of diversifying the stock. It's cause we need to relieve some pressure on the housing market by creating that mobility within the marketplace so people can actually leave their homes and other families can occupy those existing dwellings.
And that, that, that's a big plus.
The other thing, I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna, uh, stop Habitat from coming in and building on lots that they get through tax takings.
Yeah, but i, isn't Habitat by definition affordable?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're not stopping them at all?
Yeah. Um, but they do do single-family homes, that's...
Oh, no, but for...
Affordable.
At market val, market single-family homes, it was my intent to, if we could...
Um, we have to move on because time and tide, wait for no man.
Yes, yes, indeed.
Well, I said my piece.
Thank you.
Okay, actions. Conduct a visib, uh, uh, sorry, conduct a visual preference study or other suitable engagement activities to determine the types and styles of housing, and I put in parentheses architecture and site design standards, that is supported by the community in priority redevelopment areas. Maybe we could, do we need in priority redevelopment areas? I just think that's limiting.
It can go, I would just say, you've gone through some work to identify what your pri, existing priority areas are, and that act, the, the action is intended to focus on those areas, which would, which are like the C two districts, we've discussed this numerous times. It wouldn't, I think removing it wouldn't cripple you, but I just want you to be clear of, of the intent of it.
I just don't wanna, I don't, I just don't wanna limit it to redevelopment areas because you know, if you do a visual preference study, you should be able to use it for anything.
We can get rid of it.
Uh, procure a consultant to assist with community engagement and facilitation of design charrettes to support the, it used to say form-based code, but I put a development of architectural and site design standards.
Okay.
That gives you a little bit more flexibility. Explore and potentially develop, adopt and implement a form-based code town-wide or in the form of an overlay district with a priority for infill development and redevelopment of gray fields.
I might just suggest that we include conventional zoning overlays as a potential option, similarly to with the HPP, so it'd be explore and potentially develop, adopt and implement, um, a conventional zoning overlay district or a form-based code town-wide with a priority for infill development and redevelopment. I would love to see a form-based code, you know I would, but the, it's not the only regulatory mechanism, as you well know, and, uh, I, I, I think it would be great to educate the community relative to form-based code, but we can leave the door open to a conventional approach if form-based code is still less palatable.
Is it either or, form-based code or overlay district?
Well, so like, developing the architectural and site design standards would inform a conventional zoning overlay, whereas a form-based code would be, the, the, the architectural and site design standards become the regulatory mechanism.
Yeah.
So I just think, if we're gonna go through the motions of adopting architectural and site design standards, um, it, it implies you're gonna keep a conventional zoning approach. So if we're gonna consider a form-based code, town-wide, great, um, but I, I just, uh, I think as we consider overlay districts with a priority for infill and redevelopment, it could be in the form of an overlay, or it could be in the form of conventional zoning overlay, if your site design criteria are adequate enough, you're achieving not exactly the same outcome, but a similar outcome. Yeah, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, just read the sentence.
All right, so, explore and potentially develop, adopt and implement a form-based code town-wide or in the form of an overlay district. So what I'm saying is, it doesn't have to be a form-based code overlay district, it could be a conventional zoning overlay with architectural criteria.
Okay.
And site design standards.
Yeah, I get that.
So I, I, I just, I'm not, I'm trying to find the right wording.
All right, so implement...
Form-based code town-wide?
Form-based code.
Yeah, I'm kinda like trying to shoehorn this in here, actually.
All right, so maybe this, explore and potentially develop, adopt and implement architectural and site design standards or form-based code, comma, town-wide or in the form of an overlay district.
I think that makes sense, can you read that again?
Yep, explore and potentially develop, adopt and implement architectural and site design standards or form-based code, comma, town-wide or in the form of an overlay district.
I think that works.
So I just ask a question, so what does that do to H two?
Well, that, H two is specifically about the procurement of a consultant, so that would get that developing the standards, the next one's about implementing them.
All right.
Cause these are specific actions that like, they can check on.
So I, I think the last one, Mary red, works.
Okay.
Okay, so with a priority for infill development and redevelopment of gray fields.
Yeah.
Okay.
Strike that.
No, I think it's okay.
Okay, all right. H four, develop and adopt an affordable housing bylaw that requires a minimum contribution of shy eligible affordable units in exchange for bonus density, and that's inclusionary zoning.
I think we wanna use the term inclusionary zoning.
Yes.
I got, I got that criticism last night, that we talk about inclusionary zoning, but not by, by using the term inclusionary zoning, so I, I think we should just say develop and adopt an inclusionary zoning bylaw.
Okay. So that's added to that.
Instead of affordable housing bylaw, inclusionary zoning bylaw.
Correct.
Do we wanna say in exchange for bonus density?
Yeah, put some sugar on top of it.
I like to put a little sugar on top of it. Cause it costs the developer money to give affordable housing, but if you give them an extra unit, hopefully they can, they can deal with that.
We should create an opportunity to bring everybody else in for a lesson on what these terms mean.
I know.
I mean, it's gonna be, I mean, people will read.
I'm quizzing you at the next meeting.
What you need to know, something like that, so that everybody understands what it means, cause what'll happen is they'll gloss over it, so, so.
Change zoning to allow missing middle housing typologies in appropriate residential areas with the possibility of establishing a new zoning district, districts to encourage the development or redevelopment of these building types in areas where it's desirable and encouraging it where it's, and discouraging it where it's unsuitable. I did not write that sentence.
But would you wanna define missing middle in parentheses?
We can define missing middle in the housing chapter itself. Remember, this is a whole document that has a bunch of chapters and a bunch of other information, including appendices, so I don't wanna define it in the table.
You know what missing middle is, right?
I do, but...
Yeah, it's, it's like between the single-family.
It's just types, right?
Yeah, but in architecture, they say typologies, but we can say types.
Did you write that sentence?
I'm fairly confident I did.
That has a hallmark of your authorship there, you're wordsmith.
I'm fine with it the way it is.
Change zoning to allow missing middle housing.
It's or you have to separate it, it is.
Okay.
Is that the, is that it, Lynn? Change zoning to allow missing middle housing typologies in appropriate residential areas with the possibility of establishing new zoning districts.
It is, it is desirable.
Cause the apostrophe is like awkward.
It, just say it is.
Yeah.
Sorry. Where it is desirable, okay? It is desirable.
Discourage it.
That's a great, H five is really good.
It is unsustainable.
I love it, it's my favorite one.
Five is very good.
H six, regularly fund the Affordable Housing Trust to take advantage of opportunities as they arise that are consistent with the framework developed in the housing production plan.
That's a no-brainer.
Okay.
Update and adopt the, a, a housing production plan with a focus on developing a roadmap and implementation plan for the development of the town's identified sites for affordable workforce housing.
Good.
Implement the housing production plan update.
Implement the update or implement the...
I would say implement the strategies.
The housing production plan strategies.
Yes.
Nine, implement mechanisms to create year-round rental housing such as financial assistance or donation of town-owned land for the development of year-round rental housing.
You say year-round twice in that, but...
I really want it to be year-round. We can, you wanna strike the second one?
We implement mechanisms.
Virginia, I'm just wondering.
You gotta twice.
I think you can end it after town-owned land.
Okay.
Implement mechanisms to create year-round rental housing such as financial assistance or donation of town-owned land.
Beautiful. Ten, implement mechanism to create affordable senior housing. Create a new position titled Affordable Housing Coordinator to implement the housing production plan. Strategies?
Implement and monitor.
Great idea.
Or just the plan, leave it at the plan?
That's good.
Conduct bi-annual workshops to inform property owners of permitting process for ADUs.
That's good.
All right. Assess ways for the private sector to contribute to ADUs. Establish a revolving loan fund to construct. I think it should be to start, to construct ADUs.
Mary, let me ask you on the, on the accessory.
Yep.
It's something we really think is important, we should do it more than twice a year, should be regular workshops.
H twelve.
I mean, I'm not on time, Ed.
Yeah, let's, let's have it.
I gotta do a couple of years.
Let's have it monthly.
Well, how much you're saying it, the idea, is it, is that important?
Should we just say conduct workshops or...
I would've said regular workshop, but then you could define what it is.
Let's do that, conduct regular workshops, cause bi-annual is regular.
Yeah, that's fine.
To inform property owners of permitting process for accessory dwelling units, okay. H thirteen, I have affordable dwelling units, it should be accessory dwelling units. Assess ways for the private sector to contribute to accessory dwelling units, and then establish a revolving loan fund to construct ADUs. Identify suitable sites for infill development, for example, sites, plural, which would...
Be outside of flood zone.
Be outside of flood zones, could be engineered so as...
Engineered.
With, be engineered, so as to be in line with the town's wastewater and stormwater management activity and plans. Any comment on that one? Evan's reading it and rereading it.
I'm just, I'm trying to determine if I think it was better as it initially was.
Oh, okay.
And I don't have an answer yet, that's just what I'm thinking.
Identify suitable sites for infill development outside of flood zones, period.
Yeah, that's enough.
Okay, let's strike all the red. Sixteen, determine and address the housing needs of priority demographic sectors such as elderly, veterans, disabled residents via a needs assessment. And we did that, but let's leave it in there, it's in the HPP. Seventeen, I should drop.
I think it's cause it's a duplicate.
Oh, it's a duplicate, okay. Eighteen, coordinate with Mashpee Wam, the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe to develop a local preference policy that with participation by the tribal housing department would require or set aside of any affordable dwelling units created by the town for citizens of the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe.
Good.
Good, is, so is eighteen really seventeen now?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, and then I have new, introduce mandatory architectural and site design standards to ensure small-town character is maintained, such as Cape Cod-style architecture, bearing roofline, modular building fronts and sides, rear lot parking, shared parking, vegetated front buffers, and any newly allowed redevelopment or development type. So that's an action, remember we had those policies? We have to have an action for it.
And you're saying mandatory?
Yes. We found that if they were elective, people took their way out of it. It's better to require it and then have them ask for a waiver.
Yeah, yeah.
Than the other way around.
Can, can we think about removing the word any, newly allowed, any, the word any?
Yep.
And take, yeah, take that out.
Yep.
I'm just wondering if it's duplicative of the modified H three.
Okay, let's see.
I thought so. It's very familiar.
It's more or less the same.
Okay, yep.
And so there's either an opportunity to merge them or, or eliminate one.
No, I'm fine with H three.
Cause I think the purpose of doing any charrette to develop the architectural and site guidelines would cover each of these bases and doesn't, um, you know, put you in a box yet, till you go through that exercise.
Require large housing developments to provide proffers to maintain the town's small-town character such as open space.
Require that, large housing development provides.
Housing developments.
Do we have any, do we have enough land for any large housing developments? Any more land?
Well, I mean, in the HPP, for example, you contemplate two actions that really get, that are germane to this particular action, which is amending cluster, the cluster development bylaw to allow additional housing types and a reevaluation of OSID, both requiring open space. So I'm wondering if we should modify this newly proposed H twenty to be more consistent with those actions that are outlined in the HPP.
I'm thinking more like development agreement, start, size.
Or you could do provides. Require large housing development provides.
Is that, does that pass?
As I'm sitting here, I'm like, this feels more like a potential policy.
Any large?
Because there are actions you would take to ensure that, that, because it gets at that policy about preserving small-town character. So to achieve this.
We could combine it, couldn't we?
Say that again, please.
Well, no, this is an action. This is, let's do an action. How, like, remember you talked about how do you preserve small-town character? Well, maybe in larger developments, we would ask for proffers from them, such as open space.
What else is there to, to maintain small cat-town character?
Well, that, we already, we already probably have in here architectural and site design standards.
That will look to maintain small-town character?
Right, like you would have Cape Cod, require Cape Cod, uh, architecture. Your smaller massing of buildings up front, your larger ones towards the back. Um, parking in the back, vegetated buffers. Roof, roof lines that fit with our local architecture. Trim, real trim.
So where are we on twenty?
Twenty.
I'm wondering just if, if twenty should be a policy that's like maximize the provision of, uh, open space for large housing developments.
So what would be your action?
It would be like those actions that are contemplated in the HPP, that I, like the, like the, like the OSID amendment and/or the cluster development amendment, um, and/or some other bylaw that you would need to conceive of.
Which we don't have here. Oh, yeah, we do.
Any large ones?
Development zone, developed zoning which offers transfer of development rights where developers provide open space and transfer of development rights of donated open space into an area better suited for development providing. Alright, so make that a policy, right?
And that it would be supported by H twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
Make any large housing development provide open space to maintain.
Where developers are required to provide.
So it's a policy that large housing developments have to offer to proffers to the town to maintain the town's small character, such as open space. That's a policy, alright.
Everyone good with that? Silence.
I, well, I think that, that there's an action, um, in the HPP that talks about allowing for, uh, using the cluster subdivision bylaw, but allowing different types of housing types, not just single-family homes. I think we should put that as an action in the LCP.
They can mirror each other. So, yeah.
So we, should we put all the zoning, uh, recommendations in the HPP in here?
Does not hurt, or, or, I mean, we reference, I mean, the one thing is we reference as an action, implement the strategies contemplated in, which I think is fine.
You, you know, let's put that in the parking lot, that maybe we should put the, the actions of the HPP in the LCP. I have a feeling that people who worked really hard on the HPP might go, it's not in the LCP. Do you know what I mean?
It's easy enough to do.
So let's put that as last, HXX, put the HPP's action steps into the.
So is, so is open space a character of a small town?
Oh, yeah.
A character of any town? I'm just, I'm just belaboring that small town.
Yeah, but it's not an urban center. Right, that's not an urban center, so urban centers don't really have open space.
I mean, I, you know, small town character, I'm, I'm fine with that. I didn't know what open space. Okay.
So I think one of the characteristics of a small town is lots of trees around. So that's the site design, the vegetated buffers, and open space. So when you, when you drive in parts of, on parts of Route twenty-eight, right, you're reminded about like what it used to be like back in the day. And then you hit another little developed area. But those tracts of open space around the, around the rotary on Route twenty-eight really break up that feeling.
I'm fine. I mean, I, I realize where it used to be, but we're not there anymore, that's all. I know we have to keep from going too far away, but.
Yeah.
It used to be a lot more so when I was a kid. I used to walk a lot farther. All that stuff.
Hey, we need to move on.
Define the term workforce housing and identify mechanisms to create housing serving Mashbee's workforce or linked to Mashbee based businesses. So we have this policy of encouraging this, but we don't really have the action steps because we really haven't identified them. So this, the action, this is like define workforce housing, cause it's really not an official definition, and then work to identify mechanisms to create it. Clearly define all housing terms, affordable housing, missing middle, infill, workforce housing.
My only question is where do we define them?
Um, you're gonna have, uh, an affordable housing coordinator, right, who's gonna have.
You are.
Yes.
Pretty sure about that?
Yes, I am. And that person is gonna, is going to have some policies. Like there's gonna be affordable housing standards, right? And that, that's where you can define those things.
Okay.
Like I, I find the fact that there aren't defined terms, that people talk, talk about different things. They think they're talking about affordable housing, but really they're not talking about affordable housing.
Good, pardon me, there's two, a lot of terms that people don't quite understand.
So I think the affordable, the housing program needs to define those.
I think that could be two different goals.
Mm-hmm.
Define workforce housing as a, as its own goal.
Well, looking at, to Dale's point, on H twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
Why don't you delete define the term workforce housing and just say identify mechanisms to create housing serving Mashbee's workforce or linked to Mashbee-based businesses?
Yeah.
And then in H twenty-two, you say clearly define all housing terms, which would be inclusive of workforce housing as well.
Nice.
Thank you, good. Twenty-three, reestablish housing services such as financial assistance with rent utilities, mortgage arrears, and first last month payment for rental units and other mechanisms to prevent homelessness.
Okay.
Um, okay, and.
That involves funding.
Right. That's what that reestablished.
Financial assistance.
But it also requires that somebody do that. Is that the house, the new housing coordinator?
We could say reestablish and fund.
Is that human services or is that the new housing person? I'm, I'm asking because.
In today's existing condition, that would be human services, yeah.
Because we now give two thousand five hundred dollars, well, that's our proposal, to hack out of our budget for these kinds of things, but it would require more, more than that if I would bet, I would guess it would cost more than.
We wanna keep it flexible as to who is gonna administer them, just because it's so.
You need S on utilities.
It could go in so many directions and you never know, there might be a person that walks in the door one day and says, I'm starting a nonprofit affordable housing in town and, or somebody from the tribal housing office could come in and go, we'll run that for you to the benefit of tribal citizens and local residents. And Dale just signed up for that task. You, like, you never know, like, sometimes in nonprofit, they like to administer those programs, cause they, they take a ten percent or twenty percent admin fee.
You need an S on utilities.
That's what I was writing.
So H twenty-four, after last night's discussion with the Affordable Housing Committee, I think we should just let that one, like, we should strike that one. So the, the, the flow, the flow neutral bylaw is gonna get enforced.
Yeah, it's gonna get enforced. I mean, I guess like the only, what I just wrote, I just wrote this down. Um, if it were to stay, enforce flow neutrality provisions of the general bylaws.
Oh, okay.
General bylaws, um, except where waivers are sought pursuant to an application for a comprehensive permit on town-owned property.
Well, do you think that we should say, you know, identify mechanisms? Identify mechanisms for the development of, of affordable housing. I'm gonna put it out there. I don't know.
But I do think there is further discussion to be had on this flow neutral issue.
I think if we have that in there, if people, I don't think we need it in there and, um.
We know we're gonna have discussions about it.
Yep, and we don't need to
Yeah.
start those discussions just by random, H twenty-four, like, it's, the conversations are happening. Avoid housing development which is not in line with the town's comprehensive nitrogen management plan.
And, what is this?
And/or which otherwise pollutes, sorry, the town's open waters, groundwater, or drinking water. I don't know how you guys feel about that.
I feel like if we're striking H twenty-four, you gotta strike H twenty-five, that's my personal opinion. It's the same, it's more or less the same thing.
Maybe the same thing.
No, I think, I don't know, I don't, I, I, the flow neutral, yes. The comprehensive, the, it's, well, it's the, it's CWMP, not.
Wastewater nutrient.
Not nitrogen.
Wastewater management.
Okay, yep, you're right.
Only because, you know, any, any housing development is going to be polluting development.
Yeah.
Yep, you're right. Introduce more regulations requiring low-impact development or other nutrient-removing stormwater management mechanisms. Should that go into another section of the LCP?
Um.
Stormwater.
Let me think here. It has.
Yeah, I think that.
Not really a housing.
Right, that should go.
Well, you have, I'm just trying to connect it, connect the dots here, cause we have a goal of, no, not that. Safe and sustainably environmentally sensitive practices as a goal.
I see.
As a policy. Where was it? Implement sustainable building practices and minimize housing vulnerabilities.
We don't have any actions for that.
And so then the action would be, um.
Okay.
You know, mo, you know, it could be monitoring of, are your existing low-impact design requirements, it could be evaluation of, I think this is okay. It, you could just do like monitor best practices.
Or regulations, that's, that doesn't.
But I, I, like, I, I agree that we could.
Monitoring is like, you know, it's so squishy. How about just require? But we already do.
You already do.
We already do.
So that's why I was saying, it's like, you know, you could monitor the efficacy of those requirements, you could evaluate best practices to bolster those requirements.
Evaluate best practices.
Um, as they evolve, um.
Best practice would be the best.
Alright, what, what did you say? Evan, what was the last thing you said?
Evaluate best practice.
Evaluate engineering best practices pertaining to low-impact development and other nutrient-removing stormwater management mechanisms um, as stormwater management regulations are considered.
Evaluate best practices as pertaining to low-impact development. And what?
I'm, I'm sorry, um, I got it good at one time.
Evaluate best engineering practices as pertaining to.
Pertaining to low-impact development strategies and other storm wa, nutrient-removing stormwater management mechanisms as the town evaluates uh, its stormwater management regulations.
No, I just think it should be mechanisms, period.
Did I get, so introduce.
Evaluate.
Evaluate.
Best engineering practices.
Engineering best practices pertaining to low-impact development and other nutrient-removing stormwater management mechanisms, period.
Okay.
Monitor the production of ADUs and to cover in zoning to see if units are.
Strike R.
If units address the need for year-round housing and seasonal worker housing.
If units address.
Yeah, strike R.
Okay.
Develop zoning which offers transfer of development rights where developers provide open space and transfer the development rights of this donated open space into an area better suited for development, providing a bonus or multiplier of the development rights being transferred in.
I think this is one where we could mirror exactly the HPP strategy relative to OSID.
That, that's confusing.
Yeah, alright, so use the HPP strategy. Okay, only three more. Develop, um, affordable housing standards for chapter forty B development that are friendly and approved via the state's local initiative program.
Have to define local initiative program.
It's the, it's a state's program.
I thought chapter forty B was considered friendly.
Nope.
No?
So there were two different types of chapter forty B. One, you go through mass housing, you get your project eligibility letter, you go right to the ZBA. The other one, you go to the local initiative program at the state level and they pre-approve the plan. And then it goes to the housing committee, it gets pre-approved, then it goes to the select board, it gets pre-approved. And then it goes to the ZBA. But those, those really help, because the friendly forty Bs, you, you get into negotiations, like, sometimes a developer only wants one bedrooms, but the state wants ten percent three bedrooms. But if the town says, we really like this, this is a friendly forty B, and we like this developer and we want all one bedrooms, they'll waive the three-bedroom process. But if you, if you have kind of like what you're looking for in your standards, right? You can hand that to the state and say, well, we have this in our standards, that's what we're looking for. Thirty, provide financial and technical assistance to developers of affordable year-round housing.
Yes.
Identify town-owned land or acquire land which is suitable for the development of affordable housing which is eligible for the shy affordable housing inventory.
Yes. How would do it?
I have one additional proposed action.
By way, yes.
I wanna connect all the dots as I make this suggestion.
You have to move policy H four, you know.
Okay, um.
It says place under.
Policy, pardon me.
Diligently and efficiently monitor and force inclusionary zoning requirements and provide.
No.
I don't know, what are you talking about?
Evan, Evan.
I'm sorry.
Wait, wait, Evan has something to say.
I missed something, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
You have an action.
Um, so I just wanna connect all the dots. So goal H one, ensure that Mashbew residents have access to safety and affordable diverse housing options. access to safety and affordable diverse housing options. Policy, um, H eight, preserve existing year-round housing stock for year-round use, and policy H eleven, minimize or mitigate the impacts of seasonal housing and short-term rentals in the local housing market. Case law is getting quite clear that town should be zoning for short-term rentals, so I think as an action, you should consider establishing a short-term rental overlay district as a means to achieve.
Short-term rental overlay district?
The goal and policies you've previously identified, I think there should be an action relative to short-term rentals.
That would allow short-term rentals?
That would zone for them in appropriate districts. You can allow them town-wide in every district, or you can create an overlay district that prescribes their location. I'd say it's that the town receives revenue that supports your wastewater projects, but.
Yes, I get it.
Communities have, or, there have been appeals to appellate courts that have stated that your zoning bylaw should contemplate short-term rentals in the use table, which we don't. So as, as an action, I think we should prioritize that to address those two policies and the one goal.
But can you just, to protect year-round housing, comma, then, you know.
Yes, what I would say is H thirty-two, you could establish, um, a short-term rental zoning bylaw, maybe not an overlay, zoning bylaw leaves the door open for whatever you want to do to protect year-rounds.
Yeah, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Okay.
Wow. That was quite productive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
H four.
H four, goal four or P four?
Policy H four. You wanna put it under actions.
How?
Right?
Oh, yes, we, we decided that, yes.
So we gotta.
Okay.
I got it in my notes.
Then you gotta put in another number, where do you want it? Do you want it number thirty-two, or do you want it?
Well, there's no order of priority, so I'll just.
It's just random order. If we ever got into prior, we'll let staff prioritize them. Tag, you're it.
Okay, we'll go to economic development, I'll try to make this shorter.
Hey, you got, you got the four, Mary.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna belabor it, you know, I don't like to belabor. Okay, uh, you have, you have the, the documents, you know, that go with those goals or, or actions, and you can, you know, read those at your leisure, I tried to kinda just give you a quick summary of it. Number one is go ensure a prosperous and steadily growing local economy that supports financial independence for all residents while preserving mashbees' environmental quality, town character, and cultural heritage. That's a good one. I don't know how you could ensure it, but do we wanna ensure, or do we wanna create and maintain? I don't care whether you change it or not, really.
Is the only change?
Just one word, those words, yeah, same thing.
No, I think ensure is fine.
Keep, keep it as it is?
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
Either way, I'm good, I'm fine either way.
Two, okay, this one is bolster support for local businesses, local agriculture, and the blue economy. These, these one, two, threes address the local businesses, um, these, the first article, eight policy strategies cities or towns can use to support local businesses. You can just read them, I'm not gonna go over them, but, you know, they're, they're reasonable, and that number five, open a small business office, I've read that many times, um, I don't know if the town can afford that, but I think that would probably be a brilliant idea.
I have a amendment for the black. Bolster and support for local businesses, local ag, agriculture, emerging economic, and emerging economic sectors such as the blue economy.
What did you do, rewrite that, or?
So, so, and, so, so for local businesses, local agriculture, and emerging economic sectors such as the blue economy.
Fine.
You wanna capture, it's, the general term is emerging economic sectors.
Okay. All right, so, this farm stop thing, this is a good thing, um, you know, what it is, is just it supports local farmers, like, Sprout Farm could, you know.
Right.
Become a, a big business if it wanted to, I think. And it has great benefits, one, two, three, four, five. The blue economy, um, this article is really good, it defined, uh, the blue economy as the sustainable use of ocean resources for economic growth, improved livelihoods, and job creation. It's very good, but I feel until we get our water cleaned up, we really can't boom with a blue economy.
I mean, except for, like, shellfish aquaculture.
What's that?
Shellfish aquaculture.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, a lot of people are not eating shellfish these days.
I guess.
They're not eating, no, they're not, because, you know, some woods holes I just tell us we shouldn't. You're having some tonight?
Oh, no.
You're making it, you're living, you know, your, your body is immune to anything that's in those things. I love them myself, but, you know, I'm so bold.
Karen's question for, uh, goals one and two, are there proposed changes to the actions? Or is the red?
To go.
Or is there just support, or is the red just support for the goal?
Right.
The, the red are my comments.
All right, so there's no edit suggested for goals one or two? Except for the emerging economic sectors. Do I have that right?
Goal two, well, I'm just looking at the goals here. Two is bolster support for local businesses, local agriculture, and the blue economy. And I've answered it by giving an example of what we could do to bolster local businesses, local agriculture, and the blue economy, I don't really have.
I understand.
Anything to say about that until we clean up the water, if you read that article, you'll probably agree. Goal ED three, produce a stable and adequate local workforce with education and affordable living, affordable and attainable housing, education, health, transportation, childcare, and recreation.
Right.
Very lofty goal, in order to have a stable local workforce, we need these elements. Without affordable housing, I don't know, can we have a stable workforce?
Nope.
Probably not. So, basically, you know, we're talking again about employers, are they really, if we have any employers who can afford, such as Willabet, uh, employers should care about housing because it affects, it affects everything, available affordable housing allows employers to attract and retain diverse employees, et cetera, et cetera, I won't read it all, but read the article, four reasons why employers should care about housing. This goal was not adequately stated in current LCP. I mean, the nineteen ninety-eight. Goal four, meet or exceed the best available technology, technological resources, infrastructure to ensure mashbees economically competitive in the region and state. We know that's a very important goal, and read the article, choosing the right technology to support your municipality, and the other article, investing in America. These are all good articles. It seems like, you know, from what I understand, and I keep thinking about FDR and the works projects that he did. If you have great infrastructure, you create jobs and you create wealth, so it's really important.
Yep.
So if you have any objections, just say so. Uh, policy one, provide financial and policy-based support for local fishers and businesses. I did not know what that meant. Would you care to elaborate?
Sure, I mean, financial support would be access to funding.
What would it be?
Access to funding for local fishers and businesses, such as might be for, like, I worked in an economic development office previously, the town supported local businesses by providing revolving loans for storefront improvements or for signage improvements, um, that's just one such example, that would be an action that we consider under this policy. Policy-based support for local fishers and businesses would be to create a regulatory environment that is less, um, uh, or I say, more.
Streamlined.
Streamlined or affordable, the cost of doing business is more affordable by way of, uh, policy. Many of the local businesses that we met with to this, when we were discussing this plan, um, asked for by-right zoning.
Okay, by-right would.
That would be.
Definitely do it.
One such policy-based support for local business.
Could you give an example of, let's say, by-right, what are we talking about?
Well, just like.
I know what by-right means, but what are we saying about fishers?
Well, you, you asked for examples, that would, by-right zoning would have nothing to do with local fishers, 'cause there's not a structure involved.
Fishers is, like, the policy would be to, you know, up the, um, shellfishing grants.
Is this supposed to be fisheries?
All right.
Fisheries, okay. Yeah. Okay, next.
I don't know, I think it's supposed to not be fishermen or fisherwoman, I think it's fishers.
For local fishers.
I'll confirm, I'll confirm.
I don't know. Let's not be so politically correct.
Fisher peeps.
It's a new word, it's.
Policy two, minimize homelessness, I wrote work to minimize, I don't know.
Yeah?
That's good.
Uh, this, this is the federal government's plan to tackle homelessness in America, um, they have foundational pillars, and then they have solutions, you can read it, and I read in the enterprise that the Cape Cod homeless population is consistent from year to year, in twenty nineteen, it was three hundred seventy-one homeless, but they think that that number may be wrong, 'cause there are people who double up in homes and, you know.
Seems quite low.
It seems very low to me, only three hundred seventy-one, we could, we could do something about that, if that's really what the number is.
Well, that's the magic number.
It is.
It's what?
That's our.
Three seventy is our affordable housing goal.
Oh.
There you go.
I wonder.
We're on the right path.
Policy three. Explore grant funding opportunities for projects that support mashbees' economic development goals, whether it be related to community systems, natural, natural systems, or built systems, I really object to this language here.
I just need to remind you that this is one policy within an entire plan, and the whole front end of the plan contemplates what each of these are. So it's not like independent alone, without any reference to community systems, built systems, or natural systems, in fact, that is how we structured the engagement of this plan.
I, I understand that.
I don't think, I don't think we need from weather to the end, just support mashbees' economic development goals, period.
Okay, why don't we just get rid of the rest of that, thank you.
Yeah, we want, we wanna apply for grants that are economic development grants, so there you go.
There's another area where we need to.
We want people to read this and not say, huh.
What they, that's another area where we need to define.
Could we talk about? You're right, people, what the hell's that mean?
Yeah. Okay. Prior, ex, four, prioritize economic development which creates jobs with a livable wage, so here's a definition, it's a socially acceptable level of income that provides adequate coverage for basic necessities such as food, shelter, child services, and healthcare, and I read somewhere else it said, without reliance on outside assistance, and that, that makes sense, so add that. Now, that's, you know, that's a great goal there.
Yeah.
You know?
It's a policy, yep.
A policy, rather. Policy five, promote joint economic development effort with the Mashbee Wampanoag Tribe. Yes, we want to further the town's relationship with the tribe, and we wanna do whatever the tribe, however we can really help the tribe. Any, any, if you have any questions about something, ask, please. Policy six, okay, you know, um, this, I, I didn't know, I really didn't know anything about this, develop municipal broadband service, the bipartisan infrastructure law allocated a hundred forty-five million to Mass to expand this. Um, and it's a state agency, a Massachusetts state agency, to bring affordable high-speed internet to everyone in Mash, in Massachusetts. They had documents they wanted people to read and engage in public comment, which ended in December of last year. I didn't know about it, did you know about it?
About, uh, I did, because the chair of the Mashbee, uh, I can't remember, MCAT, I think?
Yeah.
Is it MCAT?
I do.
Yeah. Now, there, there's opposition, you probably saw that in the enterprise.
I, well, I mean, you hear the radio, 'cause Falmouth's piloting, I think municipal broadband are doing a feasibility study for municipal broadband, which obviously threatens these corporations that are providing incredible profits, are very cruddy, crummy internet service. And so you're hearing these, you know.
Negative.
These negative advertisements, which are obviously funded by, you know, media lobbyists to prevent you from considering municipal broadband as a viable alternative. It is a viable alternative, Nashville, Tennessee has municipal broadband, it's the fastest internet in the country, and it, and it, this policy and subsequent actions were asked to be included by MCAT, I think it is MCAT.
I heard quite a lot of that for the whole state.
Mashbee Community Access, no, that's the television one, is that, yeah, I think it is the right one. But, um.
I like it.
Yeah, I think it should, I think it's a good policy.
It's a good thing. Policy seven, leverage the assets of economic development and industrial corporation to better meet the needs of the local economy. Okay, uh.
Oh, wait, so, wait, is six an action or a policy?
I think, um, it should stay a policy, but, um, there, 'cause there are actions, I remember writing actions that specifically supported this, and I think action one is conduct a feasibility study for the development of municipal broadband.
Sorry.
Okay, that EDIC, uh, was created under MGL Chapter one twenty-one C to allow towns or cities identified as labor surplus areas by US Department of Labor to implement local economic projects in accordance with locally approved economic development plans. I think I asked the question, is Mashbee a labor surplus area? You need to read that, I guess we are a labor surplus area, but I, I had some issues understanding that article, it was, um, policy. What is a labor surplus area? A civil jurisdiction that has a civilian average annual unemployment rate during the previous two years of twenty percent or more above the average annual civilian unemployment rate for all states during the same twenty-four monthly period, and there's some other rules. Civil jurisdictions are defined as a city of at least twenty-five thousand people. I think you gotta go on beyond this, a county, I think we have to look at the county, so it's a frequently asked question, you can read that if, if it interests you. Actually, tell me, Evan, what, what are things that EDIC can do?
What is what?
What is it that environmental development, I'm sorry, economic development industrial corp can do?
I don't know the full extent and the scope of what they can do, I, I don't know, I would have to come back to it with an answer.
Okay, when it says leverage the assets of the economic development, does anybody know what that means?
They have money.
They have money, and who gives them money, the state?
I believe they obtained their funds from a land disposition many years ago.
Yeah.
Were you on the select one at the time, I mean, I think that's where it was from.
Yeah.
On land disposition?
I think they have around half a million dollars, and they have the ability to.
Land disposition, what kind of land disposition?
The town sold property.
Oh, back when, those years ago?
Yes.
And they, you know, they, they were looking around for spots where they could do something, and it could.
And so often what they try to do is conduct marketing or advertising campaigns to attract business to certain areas within the town. I think that was their real, their specific charge, um, and they should leverage those assets to better accomplish that goal.
Very slow start, yeah. In fact, it didn't start.
Policy eight, minimize and remove barriers of entry for new startups or small businesses, including but not limited to streamlining the local permitting process, and incentivizing certain uses by allowing them by right as opposed to special permit process. Well.
Where, where are we?
Policy eight. What came to mind?
I think you could just say minimize or remove barriers of entry for new startups or small businesses as the policy, and then actions about streamlining the local permis, permitting process.
Oh, that's the streamlining.
And, and the consideration of by-right zoning should be actions to support that policy.
So, the first sentence, minimize or remove barriers of entry for new startups or small businesses.
Yes, and then divide those other two things, or keep them as an action.
Okay. Can you, um, I wrote here, make a list of important businesses that would provide needed jobs and could or should be permitted by right, can you think of some jo, of, of, some businesses that you think should be permitted by right?
Well, like, business types, I mean, the people who spoke on this were people like the owner of Andy's Market, you know, he, he built a store in Mashbee, he has one in Falmouth, he also has one in Sandwich, um, he cited at that time.
Well, I'm talking about permitted by right.
Any, any business, any commercial. Any, any business, any commercial facility. I mean, in many cases, you've, the, the development authorities, whether it be you or the Board of Appeals, issues a special permit for the construction of a facility, a building. And it specifies a certain use. In many cases, and in fact, almost in every case in Mashpee, if that use is to change, it requires discretionary review by the permit granting authority with, with the cost attached. That's, you know, what, if you have an existing facility that is a, I don't know, a retail clothing store, but someone like a, a small food establishment wants to go in, why can't they just go? In many cases, the special permits do contemplate multiple uses, like Mashpee Commons, for example. There are a series of uses prescribed in that original permit. But if they're outside the confines of that permit, there's always some regulatory review that is required to be undertaken. In the Andy's Market case, the gentleman cited that he's built a facility in Falmouth. He obviously has Andy's Market in Mashpee. He built one in Sandwich. In Sandwich, it was by right zoning, whereas the town prescribes what the requirements are in its bylaw. If you meet those criteria, you get your permit. And I think he testified to the fact that that saved a significant amount of time and money, which is something that he would desire to be incentivized here.
So we would have to write a new zoning bylaw?
Well, I think you're, if you were to just take a minute to look at your table of uses, you will note almost no whys. You're going to look for the letter Y.
Yes.
Yes. There's only whys for churches and for single-family dwellings. Everything else is by SP, special permit. That would need to be reevaluated. I'm not saying how to reevaluate, what you would need to do, but you should consider what the uses in your use table.
Yeah. Do you think by having to get a special permit for many people who would like to start a business, that is a deterrent?
It's just a cost. It really is just a cost.
Cost, or does it stop them because they just can't deal with?
I mean, in our, in our, in our, in our market, I think that's just a cost of doing business. Is it a worthwhile expense or could, if we're trying to streamline permitting processes for local business owners, that's money we could save them. In an environment that is very expensive to operate in and wage rates that are extraordinarily high, it would be prudent to evaluate where we could streamline that process and provide cost savings to those potential entrepreneurs.
Okay. Want to move on. Policy nine, increase access to childcare for Mashpee workforce. This is a real problem because the kids' place is owned, is run, is, the town is, is town-owned.
Yes.
And how would we increase it? We'd have to ask the town to build another facility because they're maxed out and they've got a big waiting list and get more staff.
Well, I also don't think the policy is necessarily saying increase kids' club, although there is an action for that.
Yeah.
But it could also be, the policy is, you know, get more childcare providers in Mashpee, which could be lobbying state agencies to reduce some of their regulatory requirements, providing incentives to potential entrepreneurs to start these facilities, startup co, there's a million actions that could support this policy, but it's not specific to kids' club.
It seemed like there could be, there are training courses for home-based daycares. If they, if we had a easy plan that some, you know, mothers who are home-based with their kids, we could do that. That would make a lot of sense. Because I think people feel secure if they know the child is going to a little house with a good mother.
Sure.
Yeah.
Karen, just, might I suggest we have a public hearing at 7:10?
Yes.
Do you mind if we get to the actions after the opening of the public hearings? I need to set up the computer with the Zoom.
Yes, sure. Absolutely.
Do you mind?
Not at all.
So it's going to be a quick break?
Yeah.
A break?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pat, are you there?
I am. Yeah, Devin.
All right. We're just, they've taken a brief recess. We'll get started just very shortly.
Yeah. All right. No problem.
All right. Thanks.
We ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Good evening. We're back again. It's now 7:10. Time for the public hearing on Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC. Public notice, public hearing notice. Pursuant to Mashpee General Law's Chapter 48, Section 11, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March 1, 2023, at 7:10 p.m. at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North to consider an application from Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC, property owner, to modify the Willow Bend Country Club special permit. The applicant proposes to construct a 14-unit, single-family cottage community immediately contiguous to the Willow Bend Golf Course at 275 Quinacquah Avenue, MAP 69, Block 32. The existing single-family dwelling is proposed for demolition. With these changes, the total unit count for the Willow Bend project would be increased to 287 if the board authorizes the annexation of 275 Quinacquah into the Willow Bend special permit as allowed. 287 dwelling units is the maximum number of dwelling units authorized under this special permit. All units will be connected to and serviced by the existing privately-owned wastewater treatment plant, which serves the entire Willow Bend project. Good evening. Jack McElhenney.
Good evening.
Do you have something to add to this conversation tonight?
Yes.
Any new info?
For the record, Jack McElhenney, attorney for Southworth Mashpee Properties, the owner and project proponent. With me virtually is Matthew Eddy, a professional engineer with Baxter &amp; I Engineering and Survey. The site engineer and Don Pinto are outside zoning counsel on this matter. Just briefly, before jumping into the hearing on Cranberry Point, I think it might be helpful for the board and the members of the public to briefly recap how we got here and perhaps suggest a path forward. The board will recall at our last meeting on December 6th, we withdrew the separate modification request to modify the bedroom count without prejudice. At the time we did that, there had been a motion made to close the public hearing, which was being considered by the members. And some members had made it clear that they did not want to entertain any deliberation among the members or conduct any informal votes or straw votes before the hearing was closed. And we were concerned with the hearing closed, that the board would then vote to cap the bedrooms without providing any allocation for existing vacant lots within Willow Bend or the remaining 14 units, most of which are allocated towards Cranberry Point. That would have left us in the very unfortunate position, and I think unfortunate position for the town, where we would have then had to bring a judicial appeal of that decision in order to protect our interest and the interest of third parties to whom we had sold these lots. So we didn't feel that was in our interest or in the town's interest, particularly since we don't believe that condition should be considered enforceable at this time, you know, given the change in DEP policy since it was adopted in 1991. That's just background. You know, let me just say, going into tonight, our goal remains to try to have a substantive discussion about the board's views on Cranberry Point. I think as some members have pointed out, the bedroom count has become a mountain from a molehill and we have made virtually no progress in six months on discussing the substance of our, our application. And I personally don't see any reason why we cannot discuss and modify the bedroom count as part of the remaining Cranberry Point application. It is functionally and legally no different than the condition in the original special permit that called for a 100-foot buffer, which we are considering modifying, requesting modifying here. So if you can modify one, you can modify the other. I think the reason, I know the reason that the bedroom count was brought as a separate modification was that it came up sort of midway through the series of hearings on Cranberry Point. And it was thought prudent because it was an important issue that we renoticed the public hearing and then continue on sort of parallel tracks. You know, as I said, I see some detriment in handling it that way. I think we all recognize at this point that they are inherently joined. And at this point, I don't think there's any question that any interested party who's been following the matter would be quite aware that the bedroom count is an essential component of the Cranberry Point application. And, you know, if necessary, we would be prepared to, you know, pause and renotice the whole thing for Cranberry Point and specifically include a reference to the bedroom count. So, you know, that, that's where we are. We are looking for substantive feedback from the board on this proposal. I think you've heard from us in the past about the number of changes made to this application since it started. Almost a year ago, we reduced the units from 14 to 12. We widened the road in response to concerns voiced about the adequacy of, of fire access. We significantly reduced the wetland impacts. We engaged at our expense a peer review of those wetland impacts. We widened the buffer from the original 30-ish feet to almost 70 feet. And we've indicated that we are prepared to enhance the mitigation efforts, which currently involve two and a half acres, or to address other important issues such as affordable housing, either through an in-kind or, you know, monetary contribution, if that could break this logjam. So we are, we're hoping to get some substantive feedback. I know we have important legal issues to cover and the board has to cover with its counsel here, but that, those are our objectives this evening.
Okay. Mr. Costello, are you there?
I am.
Okay. Mr. Costello, our town council is here to answer any questions the planning board has concerning this matter. The questions are supposed to be general questions about special permits, procedural issues, as opposed to questions which would enter into the executive session area. I, I would say for me, as I was writing some questions, it's very hard for me to not move into the executive session, but these are questions I want to ask him. So I'd like to ask you, Mr. Costello, right at the get-go, should we be in executive session now? Because we, we haven't made a decision yet. But I think an executive session would help us to come to resolution here.
Unfortunately, Madam Chair, I don't believe that executive session would be appropriate at this point in time. There certainly has been assertion or threat of litigation in, in certain correspondence we've received from the applicant's counsel. However, since the board is currently engaged in a public hearing on, on special permit modification, I don't think that the two should be mixed. I think the board's deliberations and, and discussions and certainly any questions that I would answer relative to the application should be entertained here at the open session as we're presently convened. I, I don't believe that an executive session would be appropriate for that subject matter. The only things we could conceivably discuss in executive session would be litigation matters. And again, litigation has to be threatened and imminent in order for there to, to be a properly convened executive session. Now, Attorney McElhenney has alluded to potential litigation in this matter in his introduction. However, he did so in a manner that indicated the applicant's intent and the town's interest is in avoiding that litigation. So I, I would prefer to answer any and all questions that the board may have relative to the application here at the open session.
Okay, so we should, here, we should be looking at some kind of compromise mitigation that we might be able to be comfortable with, this board would be comfortable with. Are you going to, you have questions. People sent you questions. Are you going to go through those questions and answer them? Or how would you like to proceed, Mr. Costello?
Well, I, it would be somewhat unusual for me to, you know, read off the script of questions. I did, in fact, receive the questions. I mean, if, if it's, if it's okay with the applicant, his counsel, I mean, I can basically just summarize the questions and give you the board my succinct answers there to, and then you can follow up with any clarification you'd like. Again, this is, this is a public hearing and the board is certainly entitled to advise counsel during the hearing. But it's, it would be in an advisory capacity.
Okay. Well, why don't you, why don't you try to summarize what you have and then we'll go from there. and then we'll go from there.
And Madam Chair, just for Pat's understanding, I've just delivered the questions as they were sent to Pat, to the applicant. He has them in his hand.
Can I ask for a point of process? I sent in seven questions to town council. I'd like to hear from town council the answers. I'm not interested in asking the applicant those questions. Do you know what I mean? Like, I don't want this to be a debate and a back batting back and forth like it has been in the past. I just want to talk to town council as he answers. This is Mary, Pat. Just as he, I posed seven questions to him. I'd like to hear uninterrupted what town council has to advise. And if town council, Pat, if you're not comfortable answering one of these questions because you feel it's not advantageous to the town to answer one of my questions, just tell me that, okay?
That's fine, Mary. I don't have a problem answering the questions. Since that's my knowledge, I'll be happy to do that. And I'll move right into that unless there's any objection from anyone. All right. The question that Board Member Wagon proposed for me is, first, is the land parcel at 275 Quinnicwistet a buildable lot of land? I haven't conducted any detailed analysis of the property. I have reviewed several of the submissions in this proceeding and am generally familiar with the bylaw. My understanding is that this, it would be presently buildable under current zoning. And Evan can correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection is that it could be buildable for three single-family homes based on the area of five acres plus or minus.
Yes, that's accurate. If I recall, the parcel is five acres inclusive of both wetland and upland, lessing the upland area. I think it's more or less three acres. And the minimum required is 40,000 square feet.
Okay. Second question. What a year addition of the Mashpee zoning bylaw is possible? That determination would be based upon the present zoning bylaw, 2023 bylaw, 2024 bylaw. Okay, next question. In general, if the special permit granting authority is asked to modify a special permit, which is under their jurisdiction, how does the SPGA confirm that the existing special permit conditions, if any, of the original special permit or previous modifications have been met? The board can exercise its independent judgment to confirm the compliance with special conditions. The town's building commissioner or zoning enforcement officer is statutorily authorized, obviously, to enforce provisions of the zoning bylaw, which in my opinion would conclude existing conditions of issued special permits. They are regulatory requirements that the property owner must comply with. Many times, an applicant, when submitting an application, will indicate whether or not the property is complying with existing special permit requirements or conditions. But my simple answer to the question is, from a legal perspective, I believe the building commissioner or zoning enforcement officer would be the official town officer who would have authority to determine compliance with special permit conditions. Next question. If conditions of a special permit or special permit modifications have not been met and a project is under construction without meeting these conditions, what recourse does the town have to enforce the conditions? Again, the zoning enforcement officer is authorized pursuant to Chapter 48, Section 7, to enforce the zoning bylaw and regulations there under the permits. I believe that the zoning enforcement officer could undertake enforcement action if he or she deemed there was a violation of an existing special permit and its conditions. Enforcement action would typically commence with issuance of a determination and a cease and desist order for the forbidden activity. And that could be followed up if compliance is not met with a court action seeking to enjoin the illegal or inappropriate activity. What protection, some mechanism, does the town or a SPGA have to deny a request for a special permit modification when and if there are unmet special permit conditions slash special permit modification conditions? Can the special permit granting authority place additional new conditions halting the project until original or prior conditions are met? Can the special permit granting authority deny special permit modification requests if there are special permit slash special permit modification conditions that are not met? The zoning bylaw itself relative to special permit provides that particularly in this particular situation where there's a modification to a permit, the special permit criteria in general in Section 174, 24(c)(2) says the special permit may be issued only following the procedures specified by the general law. It may be approved only if it is determined that the proposed use or development is consistent with applicable state and town regulations, statutes, bylaws, plans, et cetera, will not adversely attack public health, safety, et cetera. So, you know, I would construe like existing permits that govern or permit particularly uses of parcel of land to be a local regulation or a permit pursuant to a bylaw. So I believe the compliance therewith, you know, should be considered by the planning board in its consideration of any modification of a special permit. If the planning board should determine that there is presently noncompliance with those conditions, it could consider that in its deliberations on modification to the special permit. It could order new or additional conditions relative to the alleged noncompliance condition. It could take a number of actions. Any type of action or condition that is permissible under Chapter 48, Section 9, or your zoning bylaws would be permissible in that particular situation. So I guess the simple answer would be look to the provisions of Section 174, 24(c) for the criteria that are applicable to special permits. And in my view, compliance with existing conditions in a current special permit for the property is something the board is capable of considering. All right. Next question. Can the special permit granting authority close the public hearing to all parties by town council so that the special permit granting authority can discuss their decision with town council? My answer to that question would be no, as previously discussed with the chair. Executive sessions can only be convened for the specific reasons set forth in Chapter 38, Section 21. There are 10 different bases for going into executive session. Certainly, discussion with counsel in a confidential setting relative to ongoing deliberations or an impending decision pursuant to a permit application would not be inappropriate or adequate with the executive session. As I alluded to earlier, where there is potential for litigation and that litigation is threatened or imminent, the, you know, the Attorney General's office has determined that, you know, executive sessions can be convened for that purpose. But I would be very, very careful, if in fact we were to have such an executive session, to limit the discussions to litigative risk issues, to litigation issues, not to any aspect of the board's deliberations on the special permit modification. Last question. Are there any sections of our conditions that are set by the special permit for Willow Bend South Port granted under the 1985 zoning bylaw which are not enforceable by the town or are not currently met? It's a very broad question. I understand that there have been multiple modifications to the initial special permit issued in this matter. And obviously, consecutive modifications serve to alter the terms and conditions of the special permit over time. But to my knowledge, as that special permit has been modified on, I believe, three occasions, here to four.
Ten times that.
Any permit condition that has not been released or modified by the board would be cumulative in nature and would still be applicable and binding upon the property owner. All right. Those are the questions that Planning Board Member Wagon proposed. The chair had also posed some questions. Would you like me to review those at this time?
Yes, go ahead.
Do we have a copy of those?
Do you have an extra set? I don't have mine either.
Good?
Okay.
Okay. All right. The first question posed by the Chair Faulkner is, can the planning board legally authorize the annexation of 275 Quinnicwistet into the Willow Bend special permit? If so, what is the authority for saying? The zoning bylaw does specifically provide for an expansion of land area within a special permit pursuant to Section 174, 24(c)(9). So I do think that is permissible and as with any special permit application or modification, you know, the board would have the right to grant the modification, deny it, or allow it with conditions. Second question. Did Willow Bend violate the 1991 Planning Board modification on the special permit decision by exceeding the bedroom count of 853? I can't unequivocally answer that question because I am not aware of any factual final determination that the board may have made relative to the number of bedrooms. I have heard assertions based on prior hearings and discussions with the town planner that there have been more bedrooms developed within the permit area in excess of the 853 that was set forth as a limit in the 1991 modification. Hypothetically, if there are more than 853 bedrooms within the permitted development area, I would suggest that could be deemed a violation, specifically of condition number 29 that was adopted in the 1991 amendment. Three, what are the exact steps, what must take to modify a special permit modification decision? A modification of a special permit requires public hearing. It requires approval by four or five board members and an application of criteria set forth in your zoning bylaw in Section 174, 24(c)(2) with nine. So I think the board's duty or obligation with respect to a modification of a special permit is clearly similar to that for the grant of the initial special permit. Criteria are similar in subsection nine of that section does specifically deal with modifications. So the criteria set forth there in this one would govern the board's here. Number four. What are arguments for modifying, amending the modification of the special permit decision? Well, I mean, from what I understand of what's been asserted during the course of the hearing and from correspondence and communications I've read, I presume the applicant is asserting that it satisfied the requirements of Section 174, 24(c)(2), 9, G. And I have further seen allegations or assertions that there is, they have adopted a position that by virtue of a lack of enforcement of the bedroom count limit over a lengthy period of time, the town has stopped, as a matter of equity, from enforcing that provision at this point in time. I certainly do not intend that summation of what I understand to be the principal arguments in favor of the modification to be the be-all, end-all. I'm sure there are other points that the council for the applicant and the applicant have raised during the hearing. Next question, number five. What are arguments for denying the proponent's request to amend the modification of a special permit decision? Generally speaking, lack of compliance with the terms of the existing special permit, as previously alluded to, could be a basis for denial. Lack of compliance with the current zoning bylaw provisions, if in fact they are seeking a modification to expand land so into Section 174, 24(c)(9), could be a basis for a denial. And certainly, any of the failure to comport with any of the criteria set forth in Section 174, 24 for special permits or modifications there upon your hearing evidence submitted at the hearing would constitute a basis for a denial should the board be so inclined. Number six. On page three of the 1991 special permit decision, it states, quote, "The board signs that the development as herein modified is to be constructed in substantial compliance with the requirements of the original special permit and that the proposed modifications will reduce overall density." Emphasis added in parentheses from that original permit. Question. By executing the 1991 modification of special permit decision, was it the intent of the planning board to limit density by limiting the number of units to 87 in the total number of bedrooms in the project to, I'm sorry, to 853? Is that a reasonable interpretation? Well, while I can't speak to the intent of the 1991 Planning Board, I've been working with the town for a long time, but not that long. I think it's fair to infer that density was certainly a consideration of the planning board when it issued that modification decision. And in support of that, I would refer the board to language of top page two in the modification of special permit decision, which we're in, the Planning Board indicated, and I quote, "Consistent with the OSID provisions of the current bylaw, the board interprets the bedroom limit contained within Section 9.322 as a density limit, which was intended to establish a maximum number of bedrooms within development when applied in conjunction with the maximum number of units established under the permit." Certainly, density is a valid consideration when discussing dealing with special permits. It is referenced specifically in Chapter 48, Section 9, as a factor that the board can consider in issuing special permits and with regard to benefits offered in conjunction therewith. So given the couple of references in the 1991 modification, it does appear that the planning board at that time at least considered density as a relevant factor in this decision. And the last question, number seven. Is the proponent's argument that the planning board limited the bedrooms to 853 and total units to 287 based on the capacity of the Willow Bend sewage treatment plant? units to two eighty-seven based on the capacity of the Willow Bend sewage treatment plant? Well, it appears that sewage treatment capacity was certainly a, a consideration as, as you know, it generally always is when we're talking about multi, multi-handed development. But as I, I alluded to earlier, um, density regulation also appears to, to have been a consideration of the planning board at the time. So, yeah, is it a consideration, uh, sewage capacity? I'm, I'm sure it was. At the time, and I'm sure it is the board's whenever you're considering a project such as this. So, that, those are my answers to your questions.
Do you have other questions, Pat?
No, I don't. Those are the only questions I've, I've been provided with, and I'm, I don't have any, any questions myself personally, no.
Oh, let me ask Jack. If, if the planning board were to agree to modify this, to grant your request, what, have you considered some conditions that you might, as you mentioned about, you know, mitigating some of this with, you know, perhaps affordable housing, some things? Have you considered that?
Yes, I think we've, we've indicated that, um-
Wait, before I ask you that, let me just understand for, for this board here and for anybody listening. We're now, we're talking about building twelve units at Cranberry Point, and we have that problem with the thirteen unbuilt lots. It's thirteen, is it not?
Uh, I believe it's twelve now, but yes, that's the approximate number.
But if we denied this, if we denied this application, these people could not build those, build on those lots. Is that right?
Um, I guess I would say that, um-
I'd say the board's-
The board's position would, as I understand it, is that those lots are unbuildable. We, we do not agree with that, but, uh, yes, that's the-
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Um, this, whether this application is denied or approved, it's, it's the zoning, I believe it's the zoning enforcement officer that would, that would deal with that question.
Agreed.
So, so we don't know. So that's a question.
So we don't know, we don't know if this special permit, if this, if this project is in compliance with the special permit or not. It's the zoning enforcement officer, which is typically the building commissioner, that has to make that determination.
Right.
So whether those lots are buildable or not?
They're up to us.
It's, it's not up to us, and it's, it's no action, like if we deny this permit or approve it, it's still the zoning enforcement officer, building commissioner, that makes that determination.
So if we were to deny it, that would not in any way preclude the building commissioner-
I'm not an attorney.
No, I mean, I'm, okay, let me ask Pat.
Yeah.
If we were to deny this application, would that preclude the building commissioner from permitting construction on those twelve lots?
What, what the building commissioner would do, Madam Chair, is review the zoning for the property in compliance with applicable zoning requirements, which would include any and all special permits that have been issued. He would make an independent judgment as to whether or not there is a violation. He would issue a determination and, as applicable in order in conjunction with that. And the way the process works is once he, in his official capacity, issues that determination, our, let's say, is in the form of a denial of a building permit, if he denies a building permit based on an alleged non-compliance, then the property owner would have a right to appeal that to the zoning board of appeals, and the ZBA would then render its independent determination as to whether or not it concurs or disagrees with the building inspector's determination.
Can I ask a question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Oh, forget it. Oh, I know that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
These, these lots you're talking about, they're in the Willow Bend property, not, not, uh, Cranberry Point?
No.
Okay, I, I just want to-
In addition to the twelve they want to build at Cranberry-
Right, that's, I just wanted to-
Karen, I have a question for Pat, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, please.
Pat, this is Evan. Um, at the outset of this process, when this bedroom maximum established or affirmed in the nineteen ninety-one modification arose as a potential conflict relative to the Cranberry Point application, uh, it was, it was not the board, it was actually my advice to the applicant to pursue a separate modification of that special permit, um, because-
I got blamed for that. Thank you, Evan.
Because, um, the application itself did not contemplate in any way, shape, or form a request to the board to modify that provision.
Right.
And given the magnitude of the request, we, I felt it prudent to notice, um, to issue notice to people of interest, uh, under a separate proceeding. Um, Jack McElhany referenced the, um, reduction of the buffer as precedent for not requiring the separate and distinct proceeding, which, and this gets to my question, is that as I reviewed the plans for Cranberry Point, the plans on record in my office, that we noticed abutters, um, to have the opportunity to review in my office, um, indicated specifically a buffer from Quincois cit Avenue that was less than the one hundred feet that was contemplated in the nineteen eighty-seven decision. In my opinion, that was specifically germane to the development plans proposed and could be contemplated within the proceeding. Now that the applicant has withdrawn the request of, for modifying the eight fifty-three bedroom count, um, is it reasonable, uh, to, uh, to authorize an amendment of this, uh, special permit absent a public hearing that specifically notices and authorizes, or, and notices people of interest of that consideration? Like, um, are, does the board lack any authority to do that outside of public hearing that specifically contemplates that issue?
If it's going to constitute a modification to the special permit, it, I, my suggestion is that it should be, the, the decision should be subsequent to a public hearing. It should be a public hearing upfront. Now, I guess that's the question that always comes, uh, while would that particular issue, the buffer, be within the scope of the issues raised in the initial application, uh, for modification to the special permit? If, if it's reasonably within the scope of, of what was, was applied for, uh, and it, it did arise during the course of discussions in the hearing, I, I, I think it would be okay. It would be okay for the, for the, for that determination to be made. If however, that particular issue was not noted in the application, um, and thus the notices that would have issued for the public hearing, um, as something that would be just discussed and decided by the board, then I would suggest that a, a, you know, a, a new application with subsequent notice and, and a subsequent hearing would be, should be convened.
Point, point of order there.
Point of order.
I, I never, the, if they wanted a modification, the planning board has two options. If it's a major modification, it has to be a public hearing. If it's a minor modification, it doesn't have to be a public hearing. It is up to the planning board to decide if it's a major or a minor publication. So that's one point I wanted to bring up. I mean, if the board decided this was a minor modification for the bedroom count, we don't have to have a public hearing. So I don't know if Pat knew that, or he just misunderstood it there. That's, okay, that's all I have to say. I mean, but there's two ways the board can go about doing this.
You know, and I, I agree with that, uh, that-
You gotta put the mic back.
My point is specifically relating to, um, knowing those certain provisions of, of a permit. In fact, in your, in your by law and, and-
You know what, Pat, I can't hear you.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Pat, wait a minute.
We're having technical problems.
Want to put two of them on?
C nine A.
That's better.
It specifically says, minor changes to the site plan of a committed project, such as landscaping, site, and shape, location of buildings, architectural details, lot size, roadway facilities, may be approved by the said permit granting authority, um, provided that said changes do not violate the terms of zoning by law. So I, I mean, not that that's determinative, uh, but it, it is an indication as to what the zoning by law concedes as a possible minor change, uh, to a permitted project.
So it's in the realm of a landscaping boundary change.
I don't deny that. Absolutely correct in that regard. Board's call.
I don't think it is, but-
So it could be the board's call, was it? All right.
I mean, it, the by law does contain a number of provisions of what constitutes minor, but then there's the catch-all of, or any, or any change that the board finds to potentially impact the budding property owners.
Yep.
What did you say? Impacting a butt, a butters?
That may pose a, an, uh, I don't know if it says detrimental impact or just an impact to a budding property owners. But it does provide you the catch-all of, in your discretion, if you think it's major, no matter how de minimis the modification request, you could require a public hearing. And that is solely, I suppose, to Dennis's point, within your discretion.
So if we don't believe it's something major, we can make the decision right here without the public hearing?
Right.
That's correct.
Right, okay.
Well, should we go to-
I have a, another question. I have a follow-up question for Pat. Pat, it's Mary. Um, so Karen's first question was talking about the annexation of new land into the special permit, but there's certain requirements that have to, that have to apply, correct?
That's correct, yes. It's set forth in subsection nine.
Can you review those for us?
Sure. It says, uh, nine, subsection G says, "A modification under B or C above," which I believe this would be, "may expand the land area covered by said special permit, provided that all uses, dimensions, and other aspects of proposed development within the expanded area are in conformity with the provisions of the zoning by law applicable to the land at the time of approval of said modification, and provided that the original special permit granting authority has authority to approve said proposed uses and development under the provisions of the zoning by law, uh, applicable to the expanded layer, inland area at the time of approval of said modification. Except that, for cluster subdivision or multifamily development previously approved by the planning board, the board may approve a modification, expanding the land area of the project under the provisions of the zoning by law applicable to the original special permit approval, provided that there is no increase in the number of dwelling units allowed by the special permit, nor any decrease in the area of protected open space."
Thank you.
The, the latter sentences of that zoning by law provision are, are specifically would authorize Willow Bend and any other multifamily project in the town to annex land area and utilize the special permit provisions applicable to the time of the original approval.
At the time of the original, is it the ninety-one or the one before?
It's eighty-five. It's the eighty-five special permit criteria, or excuse me, zoning by law in this case. Is it, I believe that to be accurate, yes?
That's correct. That's correct.
Jeff, didn't you guys get land from, um, Weatherby, with the farm?
From Weatherby?
I, I figured the, the woman-
Slaymaker? No.
Where you, where you accepted, where your treatment plant was.
Yeah, that, that was-
You tried to get it?
From Jill Slaymaker. I mean, it's, it's now, you know, the tribe's land. Is that what you're saying? Yeah.
Right. Oh, but you tried, you, I thought you were looking to get that at one time.
No, no, no.
I was just trying to help out there with that.
Do we want to have any public comment now?
Well, if, if there's any other questions the board has or any additional counsel you need to seek, you should do that. Otherwise, this is a public hearing and you can go to the audience.
I do have one more question for town council.
Do we have more questions? Pat, do you have more questions?
I have one more.
There you have one more.
So Pat, um, if we were to close the public hearing and go into deliberation, right? Who, who, who would help us write the decision?
Um, well, boards vary in, in their practices in that regard. I, I'm sure that, you know, Evan would, would be, uh, assisting you in drafting a decision. Town council could, could assist upon request of the board. Uh, but the, 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 the critical precedent to that is the board deliberating and clearly establishing on the record the findings upon which it's basing its decision and the rationale for its decision. That's what will ultimately be incorporated into the written, uh, decision. And, uh, I, as I said, uh, you folks have always been fairly self-sufficient in that regard, but I'd be more than happy to, to assist if needed, and, and I'm quite sure that Evan would, would likely play a critical role in that as well.
And, and the findings can be made after we close the public hearing?
Yes. Yep. When you deliberate.
As well as any conditions, Pat, yes? Subsequent to the findings?
Right.
Well, do we want to talk about the conditions now, modifying these conditions? I mean, what would you be willing to-
Can you, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, to interrupt. Could you ask Pat if now is the appropriate time to have that discussion with the applicant?
Yeah, it's not that, that way.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure of the protocol here, Pat. Is this the time to have a discussion with the applicant about conditions?
That, yeah, I mean, sure, that, that's an appropriate, uh, subject matter for discussion. And obviously, uh, the, you know, Attorney McElhany has referenced such mitigation measures and so, but previously. So I mean, that, certainly that could be a component of, of the public hearing, uh, and, and would that provide the board with a basis for other discussion after the hearing closes during its deliberations.
Okay. Did, Jack, did you, um, ever publicly discuss mitigation here? Cause I don't know where I was, but I didn't hear that.
I mean, yes, uh-
The last meeting we did.
Yeah, we, we have a extensive bog mitigation plan, which calls for restoring two and a half acres of Quaker Run to its original riverine system qualities as mitigation for the wetland impacts associated with the work on Cranberry Point. And, you know, we have indicated a willingness to consider expanding that, increasing the acreage, if, you know, if that would get us across the hump with-
Expanding the acreage of what the-
The mitigation, the two and a half acres. We have-
Okay. How much would you, what is the total expansion we were talking about?
Well, we haven't, we haven't quantified that. And again, we're looking for feedback from this board as to, you know, what would be acceptable to get us across-
Okay. Can I-
Excuse me, can I finish my question? Uh, we're looking for feedback from this board. We've heard from the vice chair extensively, but I, I haven't heard from other people as to what their thoughts on the project were. We have also indicated in the past a willingness to enhance our commitment to affordable housing as part of this. Uh, we could either do that, you know, we have talked about doing a, a monetary contribution, as we've always done in the past, uh, but we're also open to discussing an in-kind contribution, perhaps doing something with, uh, our other property up at the Sed Tuitt Inn. Uh, you know, we have twenty units up there. Uh, there's, uh, open acreage adjacent to that, which certainly could accommodate, uh, you know, additional units. And again, this is all part of a discussion, which in my mind, we've been prevented from getting to for the last six months because we've been beating up this mountain out of a molehill here. So I would like to hear from people about what would, uh, you know, satisfy the board. I do think the board has the inherent ability to get us beyond this bedroom issue, and the question is, what would it take to do that?
I think-
So, Madam Chair?
Dennis.
First of all, the bedrooms are already there. There's nothing we can do about the bedrooms. We're not going to make them rip them off. And Jack last meeting, he kind of led to what he's saying now, that when he was here, that he was willing to, you know, give something up to get something. What I like to see is the Quaker Run River cleaned up all the way, or, or whatever's on your property, that be all cleaned up. And, and where you have that hotel, either we put a dishing on the top for affordable houses or for a mass be residence would be a nice suggestion. You know, like you said, you have some acres there. We could get a couple affordable- you said, you have some acres there. We could get a couple affordable houses out of this deal, because I was looking at a monetary payment for each bedroom. Could we charge each bedroom over the 553?
Eight fifty-three.
Could we charge, let's say, a dollar each one over? But, I mean, we'd have to figure out a price. Or Jack offers, hey, I'm going to put three units at that hotel. They're going to be affordable for the residents, for the residents of Mashpee, you know?
But will then?
That's my suggestion. And I, I think it's a minor modification, because it's just about the bedrooms, and they're already there. We're not adding anything. And another thing, Jack, I've been on the Board since 93. I think you came for 22 times for modifications to the special permit, and not once did we ever deny you a modification to your special permit.
Right. However, we've had a very good relationship with this Board.
We did.
We hope to continue it, you know? We hope to come up with a project which is a win-win, and we want to find a way to find some common ground here and get this done.
Well, I'd like to, I think you guys have done a pretty good job responding to almost everything we've asked.
Yep.
I've said that before. Bedrooms are bedrooms. We understand that. I think your offer or suggesting it maybe, because all we talked about for the last hour is open space, and what that's important to the town. So if you're willing to expand the acreage related to the Cranberry Bog restoration, in my opinion, that, that would be great. And I think that, that's all I would ask for. At this point in time, we've talked about this thing for a long time. Let's just get it, let's go bong. Let's get it done. That's my opinion.
Would, Mary, you want to speak?
Yeah. So anyways, this whole concept that we've been taking our time doing this, we've been receiving requests to continue the, the hearing, okay? Multiple requests, and we have provided that. So I, I don't accept that the Planning Board has not acted in a timely manner in any way. Michael, I appreciate you saying that, that the applicant has responded to our questions, all except one, and that is, how many bedrooms do you have on the property? How many are you building now, and how many are you planning to build before this application is under consideration? That you've never answered.
I think we have.
Okay. May I have those numbers so I can write them down?
If I could finish.
Mm-hmm.
I think we have, and we have stated that we have no way of.
Okay.
Precisely computing how many bedrooms exist on our property, just as you can't tell me today how many exist.
May I ask you a follow-up question?
Excuse me, can I finish my, my presentation, please? We do not regulate what someone does necessarily with the interior of their home once they build a lot. Obviously, we have to have the capacity to treat the sewerage, and we have that capacity. We get that approved by DEP each time we have a new neighborhood we open up. But we do not regulate specific homes in terms of what they could do. And if someone wishes to go down to Home Depot and do an interior renovation and hire a contractor, they don't have to come to us. So I, we don't know. I do know that Evan and I have spent a number of hours trying to reconcile our numbers, and we are within a couple of dozen, a couple of dozen bedrooms, within 5%.
I don't think it's an unreasonable question to ask. Are you a condominium association? Does your?
Some of them are.
Some of them are, but not all.
Not all.
Not all. And when you report to DEP, you have no, no application to them that talks about number of bedrooms on your project?
Yes, we've done that. We've provided that all to the Board, July.
Okay. So how many, how many bedrooms do you, have you provided? What number of bedrooms do you tell DEP that you have?
You have it in the materials I submitted. I don't have that fact.
I, I would really like your interpretation of those.
It's not an interpretation. I provided you with a document. I could get that for you.
That's great.
I don't have the opportunity tonight, but you asked back in July, and we provided that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I, I do have another question, but it's kind of related, maybe.
Related to what?
It, it's regarding the LEC letter.
Oh, oh, yeah, go ahead.
I don't know if this is an appropriate time.
That's important.
No, I can't blame both of you.
While you're looking for that, Mary, let me ask you, Jack, would, would Willow Bend be comfortable with having their workforce people on the ground floor at San Tuit Inn with Mashpee residents on a second floor?
I, I can't answer that today, Madam Chair. But, you know, I would like some time to talk to our folks and respond to that. We have more need for workforce housing for, for our own people. It's a site that, you know, screams to be utilized for that. It's a very good site. It's physically contiguous to our property. There are internal roads at Cart Pass. You know, some of the folks who are part-time workers at the restaurant in the summer, you know, will stay there, and they'll walk down, or they'll take a bike. You know, it's under a half mile.
What is, what is the acreage on that San Tuit Inn property?
I think it's about three acres. And again, it's all on septic, you know?
It's all on septic, but you would connect if you?
I think that's a part, that's a possibility as part of an expansion, but, you know, we would, we haven't tried to quantify that. We're trying to see what would get this Board over the hump. You know, with all respect, the bedroom issue is a, it's a nothing burger to me, and I understand others don't agree. But in terms of impact, all of that wastewater is treated, and it comes out as drinking water. So, you know, regardless of, you know, whether there are 855 or 882, it doesn't make much difference to the, to the impact to the groundwater. It does not change the impact to the neighbors. And again, this site is very insulated. It's completely surrounded by 400 acres of other Willow Bend property. So, you know, I understand it's, it's a density, you know, issue in the Board's mind, but in terms of environmental impact.
Yeah.
I would suggest that the difference is virtually nil.
Did you find something? Yeah. So I don't know if you have the LEC letter with you. It's on page?
I do.
Four or five. And it's under the section BVW, which stands for bordering vegetated wetlands. And it says, it is, and this is from LEC, "It is our understanding and experience that the BVD filling must be mitigated with wetland replication under the WPA, which must be the Wetlands Protection Act regulations, and that there is no regulatory pathway for the Commission to accept other forms of mitigation." Do you have any response to that?
I would, I would defer to Matt Eddy on that, other than.
I think Pat wants to say.
That's Matt Eddy.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Hi, Matt.
Yeah, so, hi, Mary. So the response to that is, yeah, we can, the, that's to be determined as we're working through with conservation. I'm not in total agreement with that statement. The Wetlands Protection Act, I believe, does allow restoration or replication. Excuse me, I've been sick here for about a week. If, if however, though, they say that we have to do it by replication, which would mean you actually, like, you take a piece of upland that's adjacent to a wetland, you excavate it out, and you create a new wetland, so you actually expand the wetland footprint, if you will. We can very easily do that. We've actually had, you know, very schematic dialogue with conservation along those lines. And what that basically means is, the Wetlands Protection Act, it only requires a one-to-one ratio. So let's just say we had, let's say we couldn't do it through all the restoration of the bog, which, you know, that restoration ratio, you know, to the actual wetland impact, which, you know, our wetland impact is about 6,500 square feet of wetland impact. That's all, you know, you know, less than, you know, under a quarter of an acre. If we had to actually do a restoration where we create new wetland, and we, we would do that in addition to all of the bog restoration, all we would have to do is replicate 6,600 square feet. So basically, what we would do, you know, there's a couple of opportunities, but it would probably be, you know, along, you know, it might be along the main system there, or it could be, you know, up adjacent to the, to that interior wetland system as well. But we literally could just carve out six, you know, 6,600 square feet if we ended up needing to do that. So it's, you know, it's very achievable. It's just a matter of, you know, are we going to have to do that? And that's going to be, that'll be part of the process as we work through with LEC and conservation on it. But it's, it's definitely very doable. It's just a matter of if we have to do it. And again, it's a, you know, it's 6,600 square feet, so it's a relatively, you know, small area that we would have to do a actual replication of.
How do you do that, Matt? How do, how do you exactly do that? Could you explain that? How you replicate that?
Yeah, replication is basically what it is. It's like, you know, if you go in and you, let's say, you know, you fill in 6,000 square feet of wetland. So then what you do to replicate that, and again, the Wetlands Protection Act just requires a one-to-one mitigation. So we come in and we would take a, just for discussion purposes, let's say, you know, adjacent to the existing wetland system where it's not, where it's not wetland or bog right now, it's actually upland, right? So you're getting up into the slope, it's partly. You actually go in, you excavate, you move, remove the earths. You lower that elevation down to, to the wetland elevation, you know, you incorporate dry water. It gets shaped, it gets planted with vegetation, et cetera. And then, so now we've created, you know, to, to replace the 6,000 square feet that we filled in a different area, we've just expanded a new 6,000 square feet along the existing wetland system, creating 6,000 more square feet of wetland. So at the end of the day, you don't have any net loss as far as from a, from an actual, you know, replication standpoint versus LEC's comment was, they're just saying that because right now our mitigation with wetlands is based on restoration, right? So it's removal of the bog and restoring it all. They're just saying that that restoration, even though it's significant, right? I mean, we're talking, you know, ratios of, you know, 13 to one or better. If we're expanding this along the, you know, entire Quaker Run, it's going to be, you know, I don't know, but it's going to be double that probably. But if that restoration of just the bog area doesn't get us over the, you know, the regulatory hurdle, I'll say in the Wetlands Protection Act, then we would just, part of our revision would be to create this 6,000 square feet of additional replication area as well.
Okay. So I'm, I'm having a, I am having a problem with this term, no regulatory pathway, because I don't think we can make a finding that the project is in compliance with town regulations when there's no regulatory pathway for one of our regulatory boards. This is caused, not because of the number of bedrooms, but because of the, the position of these buildings on this parcel of land, which under today's zoning is only three homes would be allowed. The homes that are, how they're situated on this property are in, physically in wetlands. The, the, the impact in wetlands in the, in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission is, in my opinion, excessive. It's not the number of bedrooms. It's how much you're impacting the wetlands, and they're impacting the wetlands so much, there's no regulatory pathway per the consultant that the town has, has hired. There's no regulatory pathway for the Conservation Commission to approve it. That's my problem. And that can be reduced, excuse me, Matt, that can be reduced by the number of units, not the number of bedrooms, but the number of units proposed on this site, which far exceeds anything that would be allowed under our current zoning. The, the previous zoning is allowed because of a special provision in our bylaw that if they, if they still comply with the special permit, they can annex land and still use the old bylaw. But because they are not in compliance with that, with that special permit, because they've exceeded the number of bedrooms, it just, it makes this whole thing undoable. So it's not, you know, what, what, I mean, when you're talking about negotiating what would make it, that's more of a development agreement, not this permitting mechanism. This permitting mechanism is going to fail if we don't have a regulatory pathway for the Conservation Commission to approve it, and if the project isn't in compliance with the special permit. So that's, you, you wanted some feedback?
Okay.
And that's, that's my feedback.
Let Matt speak, and then, yes, Matt?
I just, I, I, you know, I can very easily follow up with Drew and LEC tomorrow, I think, and just get a clarification on their language, all their meaning by that language. Exactly what I pointed out, that as in any project, we go through a process, and there is, you know, revisions and modifications and so forth. And the very, the, when they say regulatory pathway, they're just talking about the language, their reference of the language of the Wetlands Protection Act, and they're saying that they think that for the wetland impacts that we're proposing, that we would need to propose some replication, not just the restoration. So that would be a modification of the plan as we go through conservation. And I could easily follow up with Drew tomorrow and ask for a clarification from LEC on that, the statement that they made, and if, you know, to confirm that it's in line with, you know, what my interpretation is here as well.
Let me just ask you real quick, Matt.
I'm fairly certain of that, just because I know LEC, you know, Mark already threw out there, he said, he said, yeah, you know, for the, you know, if you're going to do the, the, you know, replication, you know, right over here is a good little area to do it. And it's, you know, so it's, you know, we've already kind of talked about an easy solution, so.
Does this document talk about replication, or is that silent on that?
Which document?
What is the document you're reading?
It's a letter from LEC. It's a preliminary analysis.
The preliminary?
Yeah, that, I mean, right, yeah. What they, they talk about is replication versus restoration. Their interpretation of the Wetlands Protection Act is that when you impact a wetland, you fill some wetland, that you have to replace that wetland at a one-to-one ratio, you know, replacing it, you know, so replicate, right, creating, recreating it.
I get it.
Not just restoring an existing one and increasing its function.
But Matt, doesn't it have to happen on that site?
Um, no, I don't think, no, not, no. And, and regardless, I think it would anyways. I mean, my, you know, the, the 6,000 square feet that I'm talking about would be, you know, kind of, it would be to the, either to the east side of the main wetland system that Quaker Run runs through, or it might be partially around the existing wetland system that's interior to the site, the one that's, I'm referring to it as Wetland A. That's our, all of our A flags, you know, that's the, the, the wetland system that exists to the east of the proposed units. So, so that replication would actually occur on-site. But no, Mary, I don't think it, you know, technically, no, it would not have to occur on-site.
I guess I would just follow up with that in saying, as, as Mary noted, that is a preliminary report, and I'd suggest that we let that process play out and complete it. Early on, this Board had said that they did not feel qualified to make the required finding about the absence of environmental impact until the Conservation Commission had completed its, its review. So my suggestion is we, that we simply let them do that.
May I?
Excuse me, can I finish?
Yeah.
Let them do that, and once that is complete, they can present it back. We will, of course, share it with, with the Planning Board. And there will be, there will be some give and take with them, and, and that will lead to some tweaking of this plan.
The, the Board didn't say we were not qualified. We said.
Well, you're not.
No, we didn't say that. What we said, yes, we are. What we said is, we wanted the input from the Conservation Commission before we made that.
Correct.
And I appreciate you going to the Conservation Commission. I, we didn't disqualify ourselves from doing that in any way. So Matt, if I can go back to page two of five of LEC, it says, "The Summary of Wetland Impacts," and it, and it states that number 2,269. If you go back to page four or five, that second sentence of that sentence, "While the project proposes to enhance the existing cranberry bog BVW through abandonment, there is still a net loss of 2,269 square feet of BVW." That's where I got the impression that you have to provide the work on the site itself, not adjacent to it.
Yeah, no, I don't think that's the case, Mary. It can be anywhere. But again, I think at the end of the day, I mean, as, as Jack was saying, and as I was stated as well, you know, it's like any cross, any project, and we go through revisions and modifications. That would be one of them that we'll work through with conservation on. And if we, if it is determined in conjunction with the state, because it's the state act, it's not the town act, it's the state act. it's not the Town Act, it's the State Act, not the Town Bylaw, if we have to do an actual replication, so that, you know, 6,000 square feet. And again, I'm, I'm using six, it might be less than that, Mary, because it's all based on, and I won't get into all the details of it unless you want me to, but it's what's called isolated vegetated wetland, which is IBW, and bordering vegetated wetland, which is the DVW. And both those two different wetlands types have different requirements under the Wetlands Protection Act. The IBW actually doesn't require mitigation, so that's where, that's why you're kind of seeing that number between 2,000 to 6,000. Part of what we're going through right now with conservation with LEC is an interpretation of, yeah, small isolate, what we're, what we've been calling isolated vegetated wetland to the far east. Is that isolated, or is it bordering? And it's all about a hydraulic connection. And so we've had, already had some site meetings with them, we've provided some follow-up dialogue. Mark's agreed that it's definitely, you know, on, on the edge there. So if it stays IBW, yeah, we only, you know, it's probably 2,000 to 3,000 square feet if we have to do a restoration on. If it goes to DVW, then it would be 6,000 square feet. But again, I think either way, that if we had to do a restoration that it was determined, I think that restoration, just to your, to your question, or to your point you're trying to make, is that it would occur on the site, within, it would, it would occur, you know, between the Quaker Run system to our west and the wetland system to the east of our units, and that's all part of the project area.
Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
Are there any more comments? Any comments from the board? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to publicly comment? Well, here we are. So we're going to wait till we get the final report.
From Conservation Commission?
Yeah.
I think, I don't know how far along that is. I mean, that's an ex, I, I don't know, you'd have to ask the project proponent if, if they're going to continue with that process.
I defer to Matt. We are continuing, there's a, a further submission in response to the report that Mary is reading, which was just submitted last week.
Right.
And, you know, we, until this board tells us to stop, we continue to intend to see that process through. LEC has said that they believe this project is a significant environmental benefit, and that it has major value. So, you know, our obligation undertaking to you is to demonstrate that this mitigation is significant and is a significant element of this project, which should be considered. So we would like to, to complete that. I, and I do think that'll certainly take, you know, some additional time. I'll defer to Matt as to, I don't know that we have an exact timeline, but, you know.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, it's going to, it will, it's going to be a process just to work through, because I mean, I'm working with Drew and LEC, so we'll be working internally. Then, once we get, we're all, you know, on the same page with everything, then I've got to follow up with the state as well. We're continued right now with conservation from last week, we're continued to February 15th, I think it is, hearing, but that absolutely will not be the last hearing. You know, it's, you know, a month after that, you know, it's, you know, mid-March, you know, possibly, but I, I can't guarantee that. There's definitely, you know, there's a, there's a fair amount of information that we got to just follow through, and it all just takes time. I mean, you know, I guess, like, with the wetland consultants that I have, you know, coordination with LEC and the conservation, then rolling the state in and coordinating with the state, all of that, regardless of just our effort, just takes time on the coordination pieces, you know, so. But, you know, like, I mean, I feel my hope would be, let's say, you know, mid-March, but I can't guarantee that.
How does the board feel about that? Do you think this should be rolled over?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just not hearing enough tonight.
Me either.
You know what I mean? And I don't want, I, I don't want you to waste your time with that. I, I really, in taking heavy what town council said about a determination by the building commissioner or enforcement officer regarding whether this project is in compliance or not, that, that's going to take a considerable amount of resources from the building commissioner or the zoning enforcement officer, probably employing a land use attorney to study this, this, this permit. I, I'm not comfortable going forward under, I don't think it's reasonable to go forward if there's a suspect that the, that the project is not in compliance with the special permit.
So the building department determines that?
According to Pat Costello. The only entity, Pat, jump in here.
Here, you know, your building commissioner's building enforcement officer has the, the statutory authority to make zoning determinations. So if you want a definitive determination, that's, that's the officer you'd go to for that. But on the other hand, you know, it's not at all uncommon, in fact, it's very common for applicants in a project of this nature to, to meet with other town staff, as, as they apparently have done with Evan prior to this submission, who is obviously very well versed in zoning by law as well. The board can consider whatever evidence or information it wants, but for, like, an official determination of zoning compliance, I would suggest that having input from the building commissioner is the most official way to go about it.
Pat, would you mind, just again, because I can hear you much better now, I think I am a little hard of hearing, go back. I understand if the, it goes to the building inspector, and he decides, I'm talking now about those 12 unbilled properties, he decides whether he's going to issue a building permit or not. If he decides not to, is that the end of the road, or does it go, I mean, it's not the end of the road for, for the applicant, I'm sure he'll find some other avenues, but could you tell me, what is the next step if this were denied by the building inspector?
If a building permit application was applied for and denied, the applicant would have a right to appeal into the zoning order.
The ZBA.
Under chapter 48, section eight.
Yeah.
And is that the same process? Is there, is there an appeal process for a determination made by the building commissioner?
Yes.
Yeah. That's the appeal, it goes to the ZBA. And then, and then if the B.
No, I mean, it, it, so if, if we ask the building commissioner to make a zoning deter, I mean, a determination.
No building permit denied.
No, 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 I'm not, I, I'm not asking that. I'm asking.
He can issue a letter of determination.
Oh, a letter of determination.
This, right. So, so Pat, if the building commissioner issues a letter of determination regarding whether the project is in compliance with the special permit, what's the appeal process for that?
All right, well, it, it would be the same. If, if, if a private party or a property owner asks for a determination, the same process would apply. But it's not at all uncommon for the building commissioner or inspector to offer testimony or opinion to a board such as the planning board. I don't think that would be an appealable determination in that vein, but that happens all the time as well. I'm sure you've had a building commissioner appear before you on maps of this type, so he could offer an opinion to the board, you know, not in his chapter 48 capacity, but in his, it is expert capacity in some, familiar with the zoning laws and building code.
Okay. Thank you, I didn't catch that at first when you said that. And you're saying that we could take the testimony of, like, the town planner as well?
Sure. I mean, yes, yeah, it, it's, any information that's provided to the board during the course of the hearing deserves your consideration, and you give it weight as you deem appropriate. And certainly municipal officers, such as the building inspector and town planner, director of development, you know, sort of, you know, expertise in these areas, so you can consider that whatever they, they willing to offer to you.
That might simple, that might, that seems like a simpler process, is, is to ask the building commissioner to come and testify on the matter.
Who else would we want to come and testify?
Well, it's the town officials. I don't think there are any other town officials whose testimony would offer any substantive information that hasn't otherwise been provided, perhaps with the exception of the conservation agent, who by way of his collaboration with the conservation commissioners and the applicant relative to the mitigation package offered, I, I, I'm not certain he need appear, or he could write a memo, but, but my only point is that, absent the building commissioner, myself, and the conservation agent, I, I don't think there are any other staff members whose opinions are necessarily directly germane to their own expertise.
Because the, because the health director didn't permit this.
Correct.
It's a state wastewater permit.
Correct.
Well, why don't we do that, then? I mean, if we get a memo from Drew on this, and, I mean, we could get a memo from all of them.
Oh, I'd love to invite the building commissioner in. I have so many questions about this.
Okay, well, then you're here and the building commissioner, that would be adequate if the conservation agent wants to come, or he wants to write a memo to us.
I can communicate that.
Okay. So we don't need to.
The purpose of determining whether the, the project is in compliance with the special permit.
Understood.
I'm, I'm hoping that.
And the collateral issue that I've always been concerned about, too.
Say it again, please.
And the colla, the other issue that I've always been concerned about, because, you know, the 12 unbilled lots, I don't know, it just, it matters to me.
Yes.
How we handle that.
Yes, correct.
So the whole thing, we need to, we need to get some answers that are not going to be binding on anybody. It's not like the person can take it to the ZBA if they don't like the answer, because this is just conversation.
Right.
So are we all for that? We don't have to have a motion for that, do we?
I think just one, one final point before we make a decision on this matter. I think it's been relatively well established at this point, based on estimates provided by me and by estimates provided by the applicant, that the bedroom, the bedrooms in Will Event's project area are in excess of 853. I would posit that there is potential for subsequent to a determination by the building commissioner that is not advantageous in consideration of the property owners you've just identified.
Right.
And so I, I just want you to consider that as you evaluate whether or not you want to receive that official determination, because you have also, within your discretion and authority, the ability to mitigate the impacts created by the alleged non-compliance by way of new conditions as outlined by attorney Costello and a subsequent modification that would mitigate those impacts and not aggrieve those property owners.
Understood.
So, I mean, if it went to the building department and he says that it's okay, we don't get no mitigation, then?
Well, no, because this, this issue is specifically relative to whether or not that permit condition is in compliance. You still have to deal with that question.
All right.
I think we know that bedrooms are in excess of 853. It's the extent of which it is non-compliance we are unawares of. And so it is my understanding that as a general policy matter, the board has not been interested in removing the development rights of those property owners who have purchased in Will Event under the expectation of receiving a building permit. I think you have the ability to do that without an official determination, and if you decide to do so, should condition any approval you decide to render appropriately to mitigate the, the alleged impacts, or, excuse me, the alleged non-compliance. And so I would, I would suggest you can invite the building commissioner in here for discussion, but there, you know, but the, the, a formal request for determination has the potential to aggrieve those property owners. And I just want to make it clear as you consider how you'd like to approach the commissioner with your questions.
All right, so should, can?
So if we could take action on, on the requests and modify the bedrooms, and then eliminate that from any further discussion with the building inspector?
Say that again, please, Mike.
If we were to take action on removing the bedrooms as an issue, that would remove that from the building inspector's discussion or thought process?
Well, I think regardless, regardless of whether the commissioner makes a determination one way or the other, if, if he makes a determination that it's out of compliance, he more or less would be compelled to no longer issue permits to those property owners in the permit area until such time as this board modifies that provision that would correct or otherwise put the commissioner in a, in a position to issue those permits. And so I would suggest, I would suggest that you consider a discussion with the building commissioner, if you find that is appropriate. But through your deliberations on this particular application, Cranberry Point, you would need to make a particular finding. I would suggest you need to make a finding relative of the special permit conditions. Presumably that may be that the bedroom maximum of 853 is not in compliance, and as conditions of any decision you make, if it, if you decide to approve it, I'm not, if you decide to vote to modify, the finding you made relative to that non-compliance should be conditioned as to correct or otherwise mitigate the impacts by way of that non-compliance. I, I, I only am expressing concern that if the building commissioner renders a negative determination now, until such time as that happens, th- those property owners, the 13 you've identified as being concerned about, are in a very difficult position.
So I think we have to, we as a board have to think how we feel about those 13 people who were on notice but were not informed because they were not lawyers and they didn't read the small print.
And, and beyond those 13, there are, there are still.
Jack, you say 12, right?
Well, I believe there are 13 lots, there might be one permit pulled since this began.
Yeah, I think there was one permit pulled. And I guess, I, I would also point out, you should think about that, you know, that determination immediately renders those permits zero value, and it was going to result in abatements and a loss of tax revenue of $50,000 or more to the town. So, again, I personally.
I'm sorry.
Personally, I don't see the utility, you know, i- in this process, where, we're talking about starting a fight, which we don't have to have, that will take multiple years and hundreds of thousands of dollars to resolve, because, you know, my client cannot walk away from this. And the issue is not just arithmetic, it has really nothing to do with arithmetic. We have acknowledged that we have over at 853 bedrooms. Our position is, this board and its press assessors has not enforced that permit for 31 years, and as a matter of equity, given one, that the state does not allow towns to regulate interior spaces, and two, there is no impact that zoning is concerned with by virtue of the fact that a home has three bedrooms, or two bedrooms, or four bedrooms. So that will be the issue. It's not simply counting up the bedrooms and saying, up there's 854, you're in violation. It's, it's more complicated than that. It's an equitable entity, you know, an equity argument. But again, in my view, it's a fight we don't have to have if we can agree on a project that will be a win-win for the town and for the proponent, and, you know, we're prepared to talk about that.
Can I ask the town planner? While between now and the next meeting, we should all be thinking about what forms of mitigation would we like to have?
I have a follow-up question for the town planner.
Okay.
So you were talking about, you know, not tripping anything into something becoming unbuildable, while talking to the building commissioner, and if that did happen, that there should be some type of mitigation to mitigate the, that, the impacts, right? And I, I'm summarizing it really, really short. So since we're talking about bedrooms, and bedrooms can't be.
be regulated, right, in this situation, how can we, how can we have a condition that would mitigate that?
Well, I think, you know, as your original permit states, the bedroom count was connected to density and users within the project area, which has variable impacts. And you could, you know, the applicants proposed a couple mitigative measures, such as increased bog restoration and increased contributions to affordable housing. I'm saying as conditions to mitigate those impacts, there is a, there's a recognition that the bedrooms are in excess, and to resolve the impacts of that problem, you would expect X, Y, or Z.
Right.
But, okay, but it wouldn't be mitigation that would be linked to any type of continuing limitation on bedroom count?
Say your last question for me again, please.
Those mitigations...
Yes.
Wouldn't involve a limitation on bedroom count?
Well, any condition you impose could contemplate further, an additional maximum.
But I thought we couldn't, couldn't make new conditions on bedrooms?
Well, it is true. You cannot regulate the interior space of single-family dwellings.
Okay, all right.
You can't do that.
I get what you're saying. Thank you.
Well, we would calculate, like, the worst-case scenario, or if you want to call it that, 12 units times four, that's 48.
I just, I would remind you, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Madam Chair, by the way. There's two stopgap measures in the permit itself, and it's the bedroom maximum and it's the dwelling unit count. Willow Bend is only entitled 13 more units, if I remember correctly.
All right.
Maybe it's 14. I don't exactly remember, but there, I think there's 274, you're entitled 287. So, the bedroom, the number of bedrooms in Willow Bend can only grow by a finite number. It isn't infinitely expandable.
Say that again.
So, I mean, unless each dwelling unit had 100 bedrooms in it, so I guess in that bizarre hypothetical, you'd have a substantial density. But in those 14 units, under the presumption that they're approved at a certain figure, which is what we tried to get through with our estimates, assuming a certain number of bedrooms for the 13 remaining houses that are unbuilt, and for the permits that have yet to be pulled at Willow Circle, and for those under construction that have not yet been occupied, plus any units proposed within the remaining Cranberry Point or other applications, should it not be Cranberry Point, that numbers could be contemplated, whereas you could establish a new maximum in exchange for some...
Contemplated right here in that paper you wrote on, in August.
So, I think if you were to evaluate Cranberry Point or some of the future projects for those 13 or 14 units, you could prescribe, or at least within the overall permit area... Can you condition bedrooms? That's very complicated.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, maybe we should ask the town council.
Yeah. I mean, Pat, can you hear me?
I'm sorry?
Can you hear, Evan?
Yes, yes, yeah.
The question really is getting at this limitation under the zoning act for towns to regulate the interior space of single-family dwellings.
Yeah.
So, could the board impose a condition, should they choose to modify this, that limits any, the number of bedrooms in any future dwellings authorized under the permit to, like, say, four per unit? Or is that in conflict with the prohibition against that, against regulating interior space?
The, the, the zoning act specifically said, first of all, the general criteria for issuing special permits is that special permits may be issued only for uses which are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw. You can establish conditions or specific provisions in the bylaw relative to special permits, which may be done. It also provides specifically that bylaws can provide for special permits authorizing increases in permissible density of population or intensity of a particular use in a proposed development. Now, it appears that when the zoning, with the planning board issued this special permit back in 1987, and then amended it, and modified it, I should say, in 1991, it focused specifically on a provision of the bylaw that related to density. So, I mean, this is a modification, again, of a special permit that was issued over 30 years ago. So, I think the board does have some discretion in terms of accepting amenities or certain improvements that would mitigate excessive density or an increased number of bedrooms, which the board previously tied directly into the destiny. I think there is room for discussion and negotiation on that regard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask town council a question?
Sure.
So, so, Pat, if that whole cap on bedrooms, that whole, that whole cap on bedrooms could be removed from the special permit, but it couldn't be modified?
Oh, it could. It could. I believe it could. It's an existing term of the special permit. It can be modified. I mean, that was one of the original, wasn't that one of the original, uh, motion of action?
Okay, yep, thank you.
Yeah, the applicant, yeah. So, I mean, yeah, that's certainly, I suppose. And again, what you would presume, hypothetically, just speaking in general terms, if the board was to consider an amendment in the number of bedrooms spread of the site, you would look for amenities or modifications otherwise to the permit that would improve the site to mitigate any density impact that would result from the increased number of bedrooms. And that's exactly what you've been talking about, the wetland issues, potential affordable housing. You have those are the explicit types of amenities that can be offered in exchange for density considerations given in the special permit.
All right, so do we want to continue this matter until, what was the next date? February 7?
I believe so.
And call in Dave Mark Morris and conservation agent, or a letter from him, a memo?
February 7.
I'd suggest, if you would like us to look at mitigation enhancement...
Yes, yes.
You know, I can't promise we're going to do everything, but I would like another couple weeks, and maybe we take, is there a second meeting in February, or is that a school vacation conflict? It's going to take me a little, I don't think in two weeks I'm going to have a good handle on costs and, you know, of what we could propose in a meaningful, concrete way.
Wednesday, February 21st, or Wednesday, March 6th.
I'd take the 21st, if that works.
Okay. We won't get blamed for using another month, right?
What's that?
We won't get, we won't get criticized for...
Well, we're happy to meet, but we're trying to make this productive, too.
Yeah, I want to get it over with.
I know. I know. Me, too. I want it over with, too.
Some of the ideas we have is expanding the bog restoration major, and I don't know the geometry totally on that.
To the, to the complete Quaker run.
Quaker run that's in their property.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a massive undertaking. That's about 13 acres, but, you know, and it's, I know, I know it's costing us about 250...
Jack, that's a starting point. You could say...
I understand. I'm just...
I'm just throwing out things that...
I'm just setting expectations. I mean, I think, you know, again, and we'll defer to that, but that's why we need a month. Let us come back and figure out the way to get the biggest bang for the buck on that. I think there are areas of it that are much more critical, contiguous to the channel of the actual Quaker run that we would focus on, but...
In my opinion, that is the most important thing.
I hear you, yeah.
Expanding the Quaker run. The other thing that's, you know, currently, or has been a long-time issue, is we need 37 affordable houses built, units, don't say houses, 37 units in, for 10 years, 370. And that would be something else, additional, I mean, these are things to consider, or cash.
Right, and again, you know, there's a lot of complexity around that, as you know.
Yeah, where would that be?
You know, the local preference issue, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
You can't necessarily build them and then say, "These are only for Mashpee people," you know.
For state laws.
But we'll work with you and your group.
Yeah, in the past, there's been a donation of land or real property...
Yeah.
...to a nonprofit that takes it over.
Yeah.
And so, Habitat is a good partner.
Yeah.
So, I would recommend giving them a call and seeing if they have their eye on anything in Mashpee. And they take care, we did that with, what was that, Aquay Bay Highlands? They had to provide one affordable unit. We, they donated the lot to Habitat, and Habitat took care of everything.
Okay, I make a, I make a motion?
No, I'm not, I haven't, I haven't said, I think we should go around the room to see what other mitigation measures people have in mind.
We're just throwing out ideas now.
Right, I don't want to close, I don't want to close the, until I get to say what I want to say.
Mike, do you have some thoughts on mitigation?
Yeah, I had mentioned expanding the acreage of, you know, mitigation relative to the bog and other things like that, because we kept talking about open space and land. For me, that would be an appropriate response. I don't, I'm not looking for an awful lot, because I think they've done a lot so far, and I don't think the bedrooms is that big an issue, in my own opinion, but, so that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, how about you?
Well, I don't think the bedroom's a big issue. We could correct that, and I'd like to see what Jack offers us. That's what I'm waiting for.
Dale?
And the more, the better. Jack, the way I...
I understand, yeah.
Yeah, I would say that total restoration of Quaker Run, or very near total restoration, because we got, we, I think we should think of the bigger picture of when you restore one system, how it affects the entire system, all-encompassing. So, I would say that would be a starting point.
As far as the mitigation, I'm kind of opposed to the violation of the bedroom count in the first place, and no form of mitigation could resolve that. There's a legal instrument out there, number of bedrooms approved, and it's, it looks like it's been violated. I think they need to resolve that, not necessarily through mitigation, but why increase the density when you've exceeded it by at least 15% over the, I have a count of 134 over the permitted amount. The Cranberry Bog Estates or Point Estates adds 44 or 48 new bedrooms. I'd be opposed to granting Cranberry Bog, Cranberry Point, because it just aggravates a known lawful situation in violation, so that's my point.
Well, we can't erase the bedroom, but what you're saying is, we shouldn't be allowed to build more than what they're allowed to build, which is three...
Well, you know, it's, I equate it to a stop sign. It's a legal instrument. Cars are supposed to stop at a stop sign. Well, I've been guilty of not stopping at stop signs. Unfortunately, nobody has stopped me for violating the law.
You're still violating.
Now, somebody says, "Gee, nobody stopped me at that stop sign." Now, we park, police car, cruiser, whatever you want to call it, there, and I now violate that stop sign because I'm accustomed to doing that. I get a ticket. I broke the law. I got notified or whatever. I'm guilty. I'm not going to go back tomorrow and violate it again, and again, and again. That's my logic here. I'm not building 14 more units at Cranberry Point. Intensifies that violation, and...
I understand what you're saying. I think we also have to consider how long, because for sure, if we deny, Willow Bend will appeal this, and this battle could go on quite a long while. I know their defenses. I don't know how meritorious they are. I'm not totally up on the case law, but there's a lot to think about here. And if they gave good mitigation, I think, I know you can't, I understand exactly what you're saying, but we're in a situation, we have to kind of look at balance here.
That's why we have a board.
Yeah, why we have a board. What are, what are we going to do? Do we want to fight this to the death and spend $300,000 of town money, or God knows how much this would be, and perhaps lose or prevail?
Or prevail. So, I still have my concern of the 100-foot buffer. I'm still concerned that you have structures in the wetlands. Those are, I'm not going to opine on what my other board members have said, but I hope you listen to them very carefully.
And, Madam Chair, to the point made, I think we should also consider what precedent we're setting that if...
Precedent, yeah.
You know, if it's out of compliance, and, well, how do we, how do we move forward with that? I mean, I don't know how, I don't know how it was done in the past, but what I'm seeing is that they're out of compliance, and after the fact, we want to do, they wanted to make an, make an adjustment to that, but they're out of compliance, so how do we go forward with that? What precedent does that set?
Well, let me ask you, Jack, because I don't, I don't know land use. I don't know this subject.
Well, why don't you ask town council?
Not my area, but how was it ever legal to put in the first place 853-bedroom cap?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know that I was around back, back then.
Town council has an answer for that.
I think that was, what I've been able to determine, was the first thing that happened here was, you know, back in 1985, when you propose a project of this size, you have to do an environmental impact report through the state MIPA office, and you have to identify all the elements of the project and all the potential impacts.
Yeah.
And so, they identified the size of the project, the number of units, and the construction of a wastewater treatment plant, which would have the magic number of 853-bedroom capacity to treat.
Capacity.
So, that's where that number came from. And I think that just got carried through saying, you know, no matter how many units we built, obviously, we're not going to exceed the capacity of that plant. And over time, the facts have told us that the plant, which now has, in addition to those bedrooms, all of Catuah Bay hooked into it, all of Shoestring Bay hooked into it, 10 homes on Pleasant Park hooked into it, none of which are actually within the permit area, and it still is running during the summer months at 60 to 70% of its capacity.
I know.
So, it's clear today, looking back, that that number, you know, was not the right number in terms of the capacity. It's still there. I grant that. It's in the permit. I grant that. Our position is... Our position is that, you know, there's no purpose for, for a basis for enforcing that, because it's no longer, has a purpose that is a recognized governmental power to regulate.
Karen, if I may, you asked about the legal basis for that condition, and I, I think, I, I wasn't obviously there at the time of the original special permit approval, nor the affirmation of it in nineteen ninety-one. But it is a condition in the permit that was accepted by the applicant in nineteen ninety-one, and was not appealed by the applicant in nineteen ninety-one. So whether or not the condition had a legal basis then, I think is irrelevant at this point. I think all of us would, would agree to that, more or less. I just wanted to make it clear that.
What's irrelevant?
The, the legal basis for the establishment of the condition, now that it's been accepted by the applicant and unappealed, it is a bona fide condition.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, now I get it, thank you. I get it, okay.
All right. Does anyone have any, does anybody in the audience have a public comment? No. Is there anything more that we want to talk about?
Well, when the bedroom limit was set, what was the agreed, was there any agreed mechanism to keep accountability on the, the bedroom limit? So, you know, because, so say if we were to accept the modification, right, and we say, maybe we were to set a new bedroom limit, what's to say, they just go over the bedroom limit again thirty years from now, and, and they say, we went over, the rooms are there, sorry.
Dale, I think, you know, we're in, we're in the, in this pickle at the moment, you know, we, it's really incumbent upon the zoning enforcement office to track provisions of special permits. Your decisions, the planning board's decisions since eighty-seven have counted the number of units throughout the project. Every decision has referenced the number of units. No decision since nineteen ninety-one have contemplated the number of bedrooms. Absent the decisions tracking and contemplating and monitoring the bedroom conditions, it really should have been incumbent upon the building department to track that figure as permits came in. That didn't happen. Presumably, if you do modify the condition, the same expectation would apply, whereas the building department, through their zoning enforcement capacity, should be monitoring and enforcing the, the conditions of any special permit issued by either permit-granting authority in the town.
That being said, we're near the end of the permit.
Yes.
And if you read the nineteen eighty-five zoning, talks about bedroom, bedroom limits per unit. And I think it's reasonable for a planning board, a special permit-granting authority, to ask, certain things are in compliance, as we're going to at the end of a, of a special permit. I think there's a reasonable calculation that could be made, that there'd be no indication to the planning board that there was an overage in bedrooms. So I, I push back on this concept that it was our responsibility to ask every step of the way. You know, there are, you, you will see, as you sit on the planning board and read special permits that come before us to be modified, there are some that have reporting requirements. Every six months, every year, you have to come back and report to us, or when you sell the property, if you sell the, the new owner has to come in and state that they've read the special permit, right? That kind of, so we've learned through the years to add safeguards, to especially a project of this size that's multi-year. So, right, the building commissioner is ultimately the enforcement, zoning enforcement officer, but we as a board can, can put things in for reporting and things like that.
Yeah.
So if, if this ever goes forward, you bet there's going to be a report required at the end, that's certified that our conditions have been met. That's an excellent point.
Do we want to continue with something else, or do we want to adjourn?
I would suggest, I believe Dennis made a motion.
Yeah, Dennis.
It's public hearing, the February twenty-first at seven-ten.
All those in favor?
I.
That enough time, Jack?
Yeah, that's great, I appreciate everyone sticking with this. It's, you know, we're trying to, as I say, find something that will satisfy everyone, knowing we're in a difficult place here, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Good night, Jack.
Thank you, Pat.
The only thing I'm kind of interested in looking at is the, is the.
Good night, Don, the silent one.
Thank you, Pat.
Oh, we have people who would like to make a public comment?
There are a fair amount of people here with interest in a few of our agenda items.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so we're going to continue, all right, no problem. We have under a number, new business, a request to release the performance guarantee securing the construction completion for the project referred to as Sherwin-Williams. Do we have the party proponent here?
No, I was actually expecting the consulting engineer tonight to report on this matter. I do have an email confirmation that he is satisfied with all of the construction, but I did not print it with the expectation that he would be here. I can attest and affirm that the consulting engineer is satisfied with the construction and has requested or recommended the reduction of the performance guarantee, which totals twenty-one thousand, three hundred dollars for Sherwin-Williams to zero, because construction has been satisfactory completed in substantial conformance of the approved plans. However, if you're uncomfortable making that motion in his absence, we would have to defer this another couple of weeks.
I think that, can we wait to, to make that decision until Dennis is in the room?
Sure.
Just because I know Dennis goes out and looks at things.
So this.
And it, to me, it looks complete. And you're saying, the engineer says it's complete?
Yes.
So maybe we can just skip.
So, we have a release.
It is one hundred percent completed.
Okay.
So he has to sign it, but we can send it to him, and all the plan, four out of five of the planning board members have to sign it?
Yes, I have the, the form.
Hey, Dennis.
The, again, the value of the guarantee is twenty-one thousand, three hundred dollars for performance completion at three-fourteen Eighth and Alice Highway, it is to Sherwin-Williams. Dennis, I was just telling the board that I, I hoped Ed Pesci would make a report on this, but I'm affirming to you all that Ed has written to me in an email confirming his satisfaction with the construction at Sherwin-Williams, and has recommended the reduction of the performance bond to zero dollars, and I'm asking for the board's authorization for that reduction, so I can cut the check back to the applicant for that value plus interest.
Is the occupancy release approval date, which here is ten-twenty-seven-twenty-twenty-two, is that certificate brings him to get a certificate of occupancy?
What are you looking at, Karen, I'm sorry?
Right at the top page of the special permit performance guarantee, submitted in exchange for release of the occupancy permit. The release of the occupancy permit here, your language is, does that mean he gets a CO?
He already has a CO.
He already, he ha, I know he has, but when does he get it?
I'm, I'm not understanding your question. I see the occupancy release approval date.
So he would have gotten the occupancy certificate before that date? I just.
That was, that's the date you approved the permit, and accepted the guarantee.
Okay. Oh, in exchange for, okay.
On the date you accepted that performance bond, he was able to get his occupancy permit.
Okay.
Because he wasn't completed yet, but he secured the completion of construction, and on that date was eligible for his occupancy.
Eligible, okay.
Correct. So when you accepted the cash, in exchange for a guarantee to complete, the occupancy permit was able to be issued by the building commissioner.
Okay, thanks.
And it has been occupied since that date.
So we'll defer to that till next time?
I, I just wanted, I just wanted to ask Dennis if he thought, I thought, I thought Sherwin-Williams looks fine. I know you drive through.
I went the other day, just to, because I knew it was coming up, it looked all right to me, I mean, I don't see why not give him the money back.
So, I make a motion that we release the performance bond.
If the town engineer said it's fine, Dennis thinks it's fine.
Yeah, I make a motion that we release the performance.
I make a motion we release it.
Of twenty-one thousand, three hundred.
Plus interest.
To zero, plus interest, to the amount of zero.
Exactly what I said.
Yeah.
Made by Mary, seconded by whom?
Me.
Dennis.
All those.
Okay, she made it, not me, I didn't say it, Tom.
You guys are all talking at the same time, I was confusing this out over here.
All right, pass.
Yes.
So do we, do we take a vote?
Yeah, I pass.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
I guess so.
Are you guys getting tired or something?
No.
Has the motion carried?
Yep.
Yes, the motion carried, do I have to sign something?
Yes, please, if you could all sign here.
So Karen always signs the, the chair always signs the first one. Do you have a pen?
I have blue. Under where you want, Mary?
Yeah, yeah, just, we always leave the first, very first one for the chair.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Thank you to the members of the audience who are sitting very patiently to address the board tonight, I know it's been a while.
Do you have to sign the back here?
Let me come help you. Put it over.
Please don't bring us projects like that, other projects, please don't.
Four people.
Oh, I should, I should resign this one.
Yeah.
I'm going to have you do both, sorry. I'm going to send it back around, but it's okay.
Wait, I'll sign it. Four people.
I'm going to get you again, that's the line that says it's done.
Right here?
Yep. Thank you. Let me do it again.
Okay.
On the back side.
That's so great, another project completely done. I remember when that first came in.
Front side.
Remember what was there before? It was like a burnt-out restaurant.
It's the best application for that lot.
I think so.
I've never been in it, though. I haven't, I haven't needed to buy paint.
It looks good, low traffic, right.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you. Boom, boom, please. Thank you all.
Okay, the next up is a consideration of a request made by Mr. William Russell, CEO of Cape Cod Pickle LLC, to allow indoor recreational facilities in the industrial one zoning district. Currently, indoor recreational facilities are only allowed in commercial districts by special permit. Party proponent.
Good evening, thanks for your time.
So, if I may, Madam Chair, just, I received a phone call from Mr. Russell, I don't know, a month or so ago, inquiring relative to the potential to establish a recreation, indoor recreational facility, specifically pickleball, and I think some additional amenities on the site in the I-one zoning district. I had communicated to, to Bill at that time that your, your current, our current zoning bylaw prevents the indoor recreational facilities in the I-one. You allow it in the C-one, the C-two, and the C-three. He is interested in establishing a business, a large facility in excess of thirty thousand square feet, at property addressed on Evergreen Circle. That is zoned industrial. And he, I notified him that to proceed with his development plan, zoning change would be required to allow indoor recreational facilities in the applicable zoning district. After our first conversation, I notified him for, also that buildings in excess of thirty, of ten thousand square feet will be a mandatory referral to the Cape Cod Commission. It's my understanding that he is engaged with regulatory staff at the commission relative to their process, and he contacted me shortly ago, before posting our agenda, that subsequent to those discussions, his interest in developing on Evergreen Circle remains steadfast, and thus, he provided us with a package of information relative to his business, and given that warrant articles are due to town meeting in about a month's time, I wanted to make his request to you, make you aware of his request as quickly as possible, and I invited him to present to you tonight, relative to rezoning, or at least adding as an allowed use in the I-one recre, indoor recreational facilities.
I'd like to ask one question.
Yes.
Before the proponent proceeds. I see the paperwork here on a review with the Cape Cod Commission. Does the Cape Cod Commission have to affirm this as a DRI before you can run, put a warrant on the town meeting?
No, so I mean, you can modify your zoning as you, the town can modify the zoning.
They can modify.
Through the process prescribed in the general laws. If it is adopted, Mr. Russell, or anyone seeking to establish an indoor recreational facility, would be eligible to provide a permit application to you. If it contemplates criteria that triggers a mandatory referral, and in this case, it would, just like at cell tower applications or anything you've referred to before, at the opening of a public hearing here, we would refer the project to the commission. But nothing relative to the commission's process would preclude you from contemplating this request.
Okay.
And, and, and accepting it or rejecting it.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Great.
May proceed.
Sure, good evening, thanks for your time. So, you know, my involvement in pursuing such an endeavor began about a year ago, this coming Friday, when two things really struck me as interesting and compelling to pursue such an endeavor, which I'll get into the detail of shortly. One is, there's a significant number of towns nationwide, some on Cape Cod, which are, which are banning or seeking significant restrictions on outdoor play, because of neighbor noise, et cetera. But there's a significantly growing popularity in the sport, and there's, there's an ever-increasing need for something of this nature, which I'm proposing be established somewhere. The second reason is, the fastest-growing population of pickleball enthusiasts in the country is actually eighteen to twenty-five year, eighteen to thirty-year-old people, specifically in the, in the West Coast. And that's because the number one player in the world is a sixteen-year-old girl who makes millions of dollars playing pickleball. So these two factors have led me to believe, through some extensive research throughout the last year, that this endeavor was, was of interest to me. I looked specifically in upper midcape for this location, for a number of factors, and found this property on Evergreen Circle, which was previously part of a significant industrial zone that went through DRI, there's twenty-seven acres or twenty-six, plus or minus acres of road lands, which would be on the lot adjacent to the lot that I'm proposing to build on. I, I have an offer to purchase on that land, which is signed, and I'm, so I'm proceeding with the purchase of this property in anticipation of successfully navigating through, you know, town permitting and approval processes, as well as the Cape Cod Commission processes. So I'm fairly, I'm fairly knowledgeable of what I need to go to, to make that happen. And really, this is an informal discussion around the interest, with the hope that you would endorse or this to be on the, on the town vote for allowing said use on the premises. As I've been said, it's about plus or minus thirty-five thousand square foot facility, which I'm contemplating, it would have ten indoor pickleball courts, it would have eight indoor golf simulator stations, it would have a pro shop, a small restaurant and bar to substantiate that, and I would have a lot of significant league play that would cover everything from high school play and special age bracket activities, to town member activities, to member activities, which is, which is, which is part of the profit stream that we'll have. I'm seeking to start with one of my investor partners, a nonprofit, which would, you know, support pickleball and golf enthusiasts for disabled veterans and other, you know, emergency respondent participants. So my, my interest is all-encompassing on that realm. My wife and I own a, a cafe and catering company in Osterville, the Pineapple Caper Cafe, we're very familiar with running restaurants, running food service managements, we have a full liquor license at our establishment in Barnstable. So the, the things that I don't know is the specific details around pickleball, but I have investors and I have partners that are very knowledgeable in those areas, so I'm pretty confident in my business model, I'm pretty excited about what this represents for the town of Mashpee, and it's an ideal location that I think, you know, aside from zoning, and then the difficult, the, the steps to go through the commission, I'm hopeful of a positive. I'm hopeful of a positive outcome.
Comments from the board?
It sounds, it sounds like a great idea, and I'm all in favor of it.
Same here.
It's a big sport, and a lot of people are going towards it, you know, and that's ideal, no noise.
That's right.
That's the biggest problem.
Yeah, yeah. The devil's in the details, right? The noise. Yeah, I know, I like the idea. You know, what else is in that development right now?
There's a dog daycare.
Yeah.
Boarding, there's.
Buy the liquor place.
There are contractor base, there's Cape Cod Coffee, there's a liquor store, and there is a landscaping company and another contractor, gutter contractor, Cape Cod Gutter Monkeys.
And is this like the last lot available?
There's another one currently permitted under construction, and this would be the remaining lot.
That's right.
What's going into the one that's under construction?
It's contractor base.
Oh, okay, all right. So no, no boatyard or recycling yard or scraping or?
No. You mean out on the permitted lot?
On the, on the uses that, the, the property owners that you know of, as of now, none of them are scraping paint, doing boat, boat repairs, anything like that?
No, actually, mo, and, and scraping paint, hazardous chemicals. It's in the groundwater protection district and can't use them.
Okay, all right, good. You know where I'm going because of the food. So I remember the two lots of that, of that, the front two lots had special, didn't they fall under special bylaw?
So there, there, there's the light industrial overlay, which contemplates some of the accessory uses that Bill has contemplated on the site, such as like mini golf and food establishments and things like that. The I-1 and the C-3 are included in that overlay.
So should we, and that overlay is only in that area?
It's in the entirety of the I-1 and C-3 zoning districts.
Including these purples?
Yes, if you see the, the teal line outlining it, that's it. So if you were to consider submitting an article, it would be quite simple. It would, it would ask town meeting to insert the letter SP under the column identified I-1 for the relevant use, which is indoor recreational facility.
That's easy enough.
It's a very simple article.
I think so. I mean, I'd, I'd prefer it only to apply to the purple up there. But they're, they're, they all have that special overlay anyways.
Correct.
So, okay. All right, great.
I'm really for it. I, I just thought of a couple things, just based on what we do here. A traffic study, do you have, have you figured out how many people would be coming to the facility per day? Or, or, you know, based on winter, based on spring, summer, fall? What kind of traffic we would?
I think I don't want to interject.
If you don't mind. If the town meeting decides to adopt the zoning for this and, and an application is submitted and referred to the commission, there's gonna have to be a traffic study conducted through the DRI process. And that application will need to be provided for you for your special permit application. So I, I, I'm just, I, I would imagine that Mr. Russell is not in a position to opine relative to traffic counts, but that information would be provided through a DRI process.
Oh, I see, so this would be coming back to us under a special permit?
So we would be doing nothing except putting an article in?
That's correct, at this time. If you believe the use is not inconsistent with the surrounding district and that the town should have an opportunity to consider.
And then maybe we can discuss noise abatement at that time?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. So, can I entertain a motion?
Well, why don't we, why don't we have the town planner? Do you have a draft bylaw?
I would, I, I can prepare a draft for your next meeting, for your consideration, to submit to the select board.
And we still have time?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
So why don't we look at the draft?
You have one meeting.
Of the proposed bylaw next time. I mean, I think it's gonna be a go, but we really should see it in writing first.
Sure, understand, that's fine. I'm excited to work with you.
Okay, so, a motion, Mary?
Oh, I know, we just, I just need to direct the town planner to, to, to provide a draft.
We're all in favor of that.
Oh, yeah.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I just think that before we take the actual vote to submit it to the select board for inclusion on the warrant, that we actually see it in writing.
Sure.
That's all.
Easy enough, happy to do that.
Okay, thank you, thanks for your time.
Thank you, it's nice meeting you. I'm gonna read everything.
We need an indoor swimming pool.
She says we need an indoor swimming pool.
That's what Lynn told him. Now, he doesn't know you, Lynn, so just read carefully.
My kids have one of those inflatable pools, like Intex pools, they'll put it right in the middle of the tables for all of us.
Hey, next we have the review and execution of special permit modification. This is the second one, second decision for the cluster subdivision called Ocway Highlands.
The only thing I needed to affirm was that the, the condition relative to as built was consistent with your vote. I've inserted that as condition number two, consistent with the motion made as affirmed by the recording secretary. No other items in the permit decision have been modified, but the conditions are inclusive of everything you desired. And I'm noting that I don't have in front of me the draft I need you to sign. It has my watermark in it. But what I would suggest is if the board is comfortable with the, the decision as drafted, to authorize a member to sign on behalf of the board, I only need one signature.
So moved.
And I can notarize that signature in my office.
So moved.
Second.
Mike, you wanna sign this?
Sure.
So we take a vote. Aye.
Oh, yeah. Sec, who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, prove it.
Yeah.
Aye.
Okay, approve it. Pose.
So those all have the word draft, it has a watermark?
Right.
So one of you is gonna have to come into Evan's office and sign.
To sign that Ocway thing.
Yeah, so I need no signature now.
Pardon me?
I need no signature now, I need one member to volunteer to come to my office and sign.
Dennis, he's always there.
I'll come in.
Dennis is.
Dennis, you're my guy.
All right.
Would you mind coming in tomorrow?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, done. Okay, now for what I think some people are waiting for. Continue review and discussion of updated draft, raise and replace bylaw. How many people are here for that?
And the DEP.
Pardon me?
And the DEP discussion.
Okay, do you wanna start and then I'll, or I can call the?
I mean, I can start.
Yeah, let's start, and then we'll do public comment.
Just from, just from staff perspective, I've made no amendments to the draft bylaw at this time, just simply due to capacity limitations. The chair has asked me to investigate the potential use of sketches or diagrams to articulate the functionality or how the draft is intended to function relative to pre-existing nonconformities on single dwelling, single family dwelling lots. And so I, I don't have an updated draft. Obviously, there was a newspaper article relative to our deliberative discussions on this topic. I've had some residents of Pompaneset contact me, some of them were in this room, with concerns relative to the current draft. And I've articulated to them the, how the, how the draft currently is designed to function. But I think, I think many are, are interested in expressing to you their positions on this topic as you consider how to bring it forth through the deliberative process.
If you bear with me a minute, somebody sent me, or you sent, do you have it handy? I can read it.
I have two.
Okay, I have it here, just got. Oh, you've got two, two came in?
Those are two.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna read the letter that was addressed to the Mashpee Planning Board from Daniel and Ellie Lynch. Are you here tonight? No, so they just want it read. Dear Mashpee Planning Board, it's come to our attention that there are proposed changes to the development regulations which arbitrarily apply to Pompaneset. We've been property owners in Pompaneset for almost 20 years. Seven G Place in 1995 to 205, currently 15 Bluff Avenue, 2015 to 2024. Mashpee has seen significant growth over the past several decades, and intelligent restrictions have and will benefit all residents within a community, any community. We should all be in favor of appropriate restrictions to control excessive development. It's been shared with us that any future development within Pompaneset would be restricted and limited to the size of the existing structure. Such a restriction would be detrimental to property owners, as would drastically diminish property values within Pompaneset. I would ask the planning board to ship, department, planning board department.
Planning board department.
To share their goals when determining how this restriction is appropriate. As a taxpayer for almost 20 years, I would ask and hope for appropriate consideration to these changes. I am certain there's a better solution to ensure reasonable and tasteful developments moving forward. Thank you for your anticipated attention to this detail. Sincerely, Daniel and Ellie Lynch. Another letter, email sent to Evan Lehrer, Mary Ann Coffey. Dear Chairperson Karen Faulkner, It's come to our attention the planning board may propose new regulations that would restrict future renovations to expand beyond current footprints. We are a family of four who have lived at Eightport Wood Road in Pompaneset since 1995. Our original cottage is 624 square feet. It's our dream, and we have been saving to eventually retire in Pompaneset. We are planning to renovate in order to accommodate substantial single floor living due to physical limitations. We need a first floor primary bedroom, a full-size bathroom, in addition to a full-size kitchen and common living area. Restrictions on expanding our small footprint would prohibit these changes. We support reasonable development and adherence to the Pompaneset overlay district regulations. We have always planned to stay within these setbacks, those setbacks. We fully support restrictions to prevent the McMansionization, quote, of Pompaneset. We ask the board to delay their vote in order to allow more time for Pompaneset citizens to voice their concerns. We appreciate your dedication and hard work to save Mashpee-Pompaneset. In doing so, we request that you engage with the community and discuss all of our goals and concerns to develop a plan everyone can support. Thank you, Mary Ann and Christopher Coffey. Who would like to come up first? Just give your name and your address, please.
Good evening.
Hi. Bob Orsi, I live on Uncle Edward's Road in Pompaneset, and I am a director of the Pompaneset Beach Association. Happy to say I'm the past president of the, of the PBA. So, in any event, I think those are kind of, we just learned about this. So I think most of my residents have started contacting us and saying, what's coming? We're hearing about these proposed zoning regulations. How is it gonna affect me? How's it gonna affect the development of my house? If I wanna put an addition on, if I wanna move here year round, how's it gonna affect us? I, I heard Evan made a comment earlier that said, notice to people of interest. So this is the first notice we're getting that anything is even in the pipeline that's gonna possibly affect Pompaneset. And in my past life, I was a zoning attorney, so I think this would have a pretty dramatic effect on how all of my residents would live in their properties, how they'd expand their properties, they'd develop their properties. What I think, as a board, we don't take a position on any political or town issues. We pass information on to our members so they can make their own decisions. But what we'd like is an opportunity to review these, understand these, talk about these with our community members, as we've always done, and invite you, or you, Evan, to come in and give a presentation to us. The biggest problem I have is in the wintertime, I have maybe 20% of my residents here. So most aren't even gonna know this is coming unless we send out a letter and say this is happening. What we've done in the past, we've invited town officials to come and speak at our June and September town meetings, which is really, we don't get a lot of our residents until Memorial Day or June. Come and talk to us, have an open format, we have people for, for anything and against anything. So when the zoning bylaw comes, we generally say we'd like someone who's speaking in favor and someone who's against it to come and talk to our community and explain to us what's coming. We like to have public forums. Our residents can then go out and make their own decisions about whether they wanna support something or not support it. What you were saying before, I love the idea of having examples. Here's a house, here's how it's situated on the lot, here's the portion that's nonconforming. So if you build up the house, it's gonna have to come back several feet. That's a great way of letting residents understand what's coming and how it's gonna affect them. We really don't have any of that right now. Concerns I'm hearing, why is this just Pompaneset? Why is it just the floodplain? Why isn't it affecting the rest of Mashpee? Also, it seems to say impervious materials have to be replaced with pervious materials. I'm starting to dive into this myself, but a lot of people don't understand. Is that, you're saying that if we're trying to put an addition on our property and we have a patio in the backyard, we have to rip the patio up? No one knows. I, I'm dealing with a lot of drainage problems in Pompaneset. We've been trying to tackle two to three a year, we know about the high water table. We're fully supportive of every time something gets built or a driveway goes in, having it be a crushed stone or having it be a shell driveway. We don't need paved driveways. I had a homeowner who asked the board for help a few years ago. We gave the help, and then paved driveway appeared when it wasn't supposed to. And that homeowner caused a problem with some drainage and refused to help fix the drainage problem. So I'm very familiar with a lot of the issues you guys are discussing. My, my problem simply is if you're thinking about this for your May town meeting, we're not even gonna have our residents around to even discuss what's coming up with this. So I think we'd like to know what's driving this. We'd like to have an opportunity for our residents to hear it and comment on it. We've done more Zoom meetings since the COVID hit, and we're getting a little more proficient at it. For, for something like this, we'd really like the opportunity for our residents to weigh in on it. Some are, you know, some do vote in Mashpee, some do not. Some are kind of in my position, I recently retired. I'm basically a full-time Mashpee resident now, and I haven't changed my voting registration just because I'm trying to sell my old house and tax implications of selling, of changing my voting registration before I do. So I, I don't wanna eat up a lot of your time, but there's a lot of, it's gonna have a severe impact on everyone's properties. Pompaneset historically, as you all know, is a community, it was a lot of teachers, fire people, policemen. A lot of these families have aged, need to, need to redevelop these properties to help themselves. Some people don't. And every time a zoning issue comes up, I find our community is split about 50/50. Some, some really wanna stop development, some say, I don't necessarily wanna see McMansions, but I do wanna be able to expand my house. So with that, I'm just asking this board to really give us the time to understand what you're trying to accomplish. Come and talk to us, town planner can come and talk to us, and engage with us so we understand what's coming down the pike and I can advise my residents, this is what's coming, this is how it's gonna impact you.
Okay, I, Bob, I'd like to say, and, and, you know, we talked about this and we said that we don't think we can do this for May.
Okay.
It's way too, so don't worry about that. I think we're looking at October, right?
That being said, we have to schedule meetings right away with interested parties.
But I, I would invite you to come to us, to send Evan to talk to us.
Yeah.
And my problem just physically is we don't get a lot of attendance.
Our deadline.
Until we have our meetings in the summer.
Our deadline for October.
Is July.
Is July.
Okay, well, we could do it in June, we certainly could.
So you see how it'll, it'll come real quick.
But we could certainly do something in June.
I, I recommend doing that because there's too many people that are not here.
Right.
That'll have questions and stuff. I already brought that up to Evan and the man sitting in the back there, that I was gonna suggest that.
Okay.
I think we should still work on it, though.
I, I think it's critical, I mean, just given the timeline, your meetings in June, submissions for October town meeting, I think, are the first Monday or second Monday in July.
Well, by.
Presumably, we need to have a relatively well-thought-out and completed draft before your June meeting, so we can articulate impacts. So I, I would suggest that there needs to be some engagement additionally with the neighborhood specifically as we develop this draft.
I hesitate to even say this with microphones on, because my wife will kill me. I'd be happy to work with you on it and start getting word out into my community now.
All right, good.
And wordsmithing it to address any concerns that we have, so that by June, you have something that's a lot closer to final that my people could look at.
I think it would be very beneficial for me, obviously, you know, this proposal kind of is coming in response to an article to repeal, raise, and replace that was supported by a simple majority of members of town meeting. The petitioner of that article has articulated his position quite clearly about footprint expansion of the floodplain. It would be quite beneficial to have one of your other residents, whether it be you, Bob, or somebody else, who's on the other side of that coin.
Well, I'm not on any side, I try very hard not to be on any side of the coin with, when it comes to stuff like this.
That's well, that's well understood.
Because I really, you know, we really don't. Because I really, you know, we really don't like the board trying to tell the community what to do. We like the community deciding what to do. So I'm not for it or against it. I don't know enough about it now so to say what position I personally take on this.
Okay. I'm just trying to evaluate the most advantageous engagement opportunity to productively refine the draft that's considerate, I think, of the concerns elevated by the petitioner from the last town meeting.
Okay.
But also adequately considers and contemplates the concerns outlined in some of the letters we've received in your testimony tonight.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
So, yeah, just to further that, I think that you should, I think that we should make available, maybe we start a webpage? I know you love this when I say, but there is a story behind this. It started in 2018. And anyways, the most current action is the citizens' petition. So I don't know if you've read that, but I think you should read the citizens' petition that failed. It passed majority, but it didn't pass two-thirds, right? Then in our last meeting, we had several residents that made public comment on it. Was, I think it was our last. So you might want to watch the recording of our last meeting because there was some, and some of the things you brought up, they brought up, so.
Bob, we're close enough to talk on a regular basis.
Yes. Happy to. Happy to, and I'm happy to come in and meet with you.
Your neighbors, right?
Yeah, and I don't know if the petitioner, Glenn McCarthy, wrote anything.
I know Glenn. I know Glenn.
Did he write something and submit it to us?
Yes, we have it.
Okay, there's correspondence from Glenn, talking, there's some more stuff that he brought up.
I just think, you know, one thing we should consider doing in addition to a website is, in the near future, I'd say maybe like March near, is workshop whatever draft we get to by then and invite whatever members of the PBA are here and whichever would like to participate remotely if possible alongside members of the board and alongside those who spoke in our last meeting to just make this a constructive dialogue.
Yeah. Evan, that's exactly what my community would be looking for. That's why, that would be great.
My office will begin working on that.
Okay. And I, you know, I can stop by the office the next day or so and try to grab copies of letters and things.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate the time.
And Evan, you're working on some visuals, right?
I am intending on working on visuals. Nothing is drafted yet, but yes.
So I'm just wondering, you know, some of these problem addresses, you know, they're coming in and they're saying, well, if this passes, I wouldn't be able to do that.
We could utilize their properties.
Those might be the sample properties to illustrate what would happen under different scenarios.
Bob, you read it, and I know you come from a different place than Joe's citizen, but I personally saw this as, I mean, I understand it now myself, but it took me a long time to really understand it because it just seems so, what's the word?
Restrictive.
Restrictive and complicated, and would you say if you turned this over to Mary Smith down the block that she would understand this?
No.
That's the problem.
No.
So the question is, do we want them to understand it? Yes, we do.
Yeah.
So we have to have a graphic, and that's hard.
Yeah, a graphic would be very helpful.
But that's what we're going to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, and happy to help with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Appreciate it.
It was nice meeting you.
All right, let's move on.
Oh, this, I think this are the people that want to speak.
John? John Douglas. So I'm John Malloy, and Bob and I have certainly spent some time working together and preparing for this. Some of you may know me, some don't. I've been working very closely with the town, joined it, they have for the last 10 years. I'm on the board of St. Pompanessett Bay. I lead the effort to redesign, re-permit, rebuild the spit and have worked.
I remember you now, yeah.
Very closely. I gave an update to the planning board, two or three years ago, maybe. Time flies when you're having fun. But I've been at it about 10 years. Evan and I have worked very closely together, really everybody. I worked from Rodney on down. It's, it's been an incredible effort, one I probably would not have signed up for if I had any idea how hard it was going to be. But here we are 10 years later. And the reason I'm talking about this is because I think the kind of effort that we've gone through, the experience I've had with the town for the last 10 years has been incredibly positive. We've done, I think we've done amazing things. I think if you get on the spit, if you look at what the spit was 10 years ago, it was a sandbar, one storm away from being underwater. So we managed to raise over $5 million. We've, and only, I want to say 300 or 400 of that was grants. Everything else was the community, neighbors, you know, and Pompanessett, New Seabury. So a lot of the people that are going to be impacted by some of these bylaws are the people writing us checks to support the town and support what we're doing down there. But it's been a great experience. I've worked incredibly well with Evan, Conservation Commission, you name it. And I think, Evan, Evan and I actually talked last week, and that's probably what led to some of this conversation tonight, but Evan filled me in on certainly what was going on. But he and I were having a good conversation about the future of the spit. When we talk about a lot of the goals for the town, a huge part of achieving those goals is actually having a Pompanessett spit. The bay, water quality in Pompanessett Bay would just get crushed if that spit isn't there and we have multiple openings and we don't get the flow we need. It's an incre, it's probably the most important piece of infrastructure that doesn't really get talked about in the town. And I think part of that, in my opinion, or at least my impression, is because St. Pompanessett Bay just keeps doing it. So, you know, don't ask questions if you don't want to, you know, get in the middle of it. We're not screaming loud enough yet, so just leave us alone and we'll keep raising money. But it's, we, it's been quite a process to get here. It's, there's eight of us doing it, and we're really getting to the point where you've got eight people that are about ready to collapse here. So we have an off-site meeting next month to talk about our strategy, how do we see the next five years. I said to Evan, you know, we've got a management, or a harbor management plan being developed. I think it's going to be incredibly helpful and important for us to start talking a lot more about how, how do we work together even closer? How do we keep the spit doing what it needs to do to protect the bay, to protect the real estate, to protect water quality, et cetera? It's been a great partnership. It's going to continue. We are very, very close, not going on wood, to having permits for a longer, wider, deeper channel project, which is a large expansion of the channel at the end of the spit. That would generate about 40,000 cubic yards of sand, which would all go on the Pompanessett Spit beaches. And then, depending on budgets, depending on what things cost at the time, because I work very closely with Bobby Tomino, you know, we know the county dredge is talking pretty, you know, about some drastic changes, which really hurt our budget estimates and our fundraising efforts. So I said to Bobby, we're going to have, I met with him a couple of weeks ago, I was all right, we're going to have to do a lot more on grants. We got to go find money to do this. And Evan and I talked about that, too, and Evan made it clear, you know, there'll be some resources to help there. So there's an awful lot going on. I was asked, I think, by a couple of folks to maybe come in quarterly or two or three times a year or whatever, and give you guys updates on, on how that's all going. But I would hope that, Evan, you and I can certainly engage some more around just how do we think about, how do we plan for the spit? How do we plan for what's going to be, it's a long-term commitment to keep it going? Because, you know, these Southeasters we've had, you know, are something new, but they did a lot of damage. And, you know, there's the Fisherman Landing, there's stairs down there have a lot of damage. I was down there with a contractor today looking at that and walking the spit because the eastern end of the spit got hit pretty hard with the last couple of storms. So a lot more to talk about. I'm happy to come in if, you know, if you all would like me to and give occasional updates. But I wanted to give that update, but I also wanted to use that as kind of the entree into a few thoughts around Raise and Replace. Because I think there's an incredible opportunity to partner to a whole different level with the community in Pompanessett. I think, having been my, I've been in Pompanessett, I guess, as a landowner since '92. My in-laws have been here since '48, or '48, '56, et cetera, et cetera. I think between my family and my wife's, we have nine or 10 different homes in Pompanessett and the bordering road in New Seabury there. So we know the community incredibly well, we're part of it. You know, the homeowners in Pompanessett in my particular family are '64 to '91. There's nobody young, there's almost nobody young buying these properties anymore. They can't afford them. Prices have skyrocketed. So we have an aging population. The vast majority of people that buy in Pompanessett intend to retire here, myself included, my sister, like, you know, we, you buy a cottage, you buy a camp, you buy, dump the old house, you fix it up, you save, you save, and then when you start to get to retirement, you start to think about, all right, now I need to rebuild the house. It's a very different community from a lot of other parts of Mashpee, but it is what it is. You know, we've been paying taxes for decades with the intention, with the belief, that we can renovate our house. We want to live here. We've been part of the community. Some of us help the town more than others, some get more involved than others, some people don't, you never know they're even there. Doesn't matter. But people buy there because it's their happy place. They, they want to rebuild their, their houses. They need to rebuild their houses in order to live there. If you walk into some of these cottages, you know, you would never want to live there, right? It's not anything you're going to retire to. You look at a lot of these cottages, they're 600, 700 square feet. They have utilities in the basement. In a lot of cases, they're in floodplains. The majority of the houses in my family are in floodplain, the floodplain. Half of Pompanessett roughly is in a floodplain. Half of it are in a floodplain, but some of them don't even know it. I talked to one of my relatives two weeks ago, and he swore to me he wasn't, so I had to pull out my computer and show him how he has been for the last 20 years, 30 years. He had no idea, neither did the bank he had. So there's a lot of, just an awful lot of education that has to occur if we're going to do something significant and you want the community's support. I think, you know, the town obviously passed property tax, a property tax structure that allows the town to tax people in Pompanessett who don't live there more than other folks in town. I get it. They don't know that you even did that. I've asked a handful of people, do you know? And they're like, looked at me like, what do you mean? So I think there needs to be an education process. I think the reality is, you know, there's the whole sewer program. People don't know why we're not included. I do, I get it, but a lot of people have no idea what's going on. And I think a process where you reach out to the folks in the community, I think, I would really hope that, you know, it's not a one meeting, one and done. I think there needs to be more talk, more communication with the, with the neighborhood. There's almost, what, 584, 588 properties. There's a lot of people down there. And I think, as I understand, I took a look at, you know, the first draft of the bylaw and things like building in the, you know, increasing the height of the building and the set, and the non-conforming setback. You know, how many people are going to argue with that one? It sounds like a great idea. I think you just have to make sure you allow the building height to adjust for the height of the foundation. If you're going to tell somebody, oh, you got to raise your foundation two feet, then if they're going to use the space, you got to let them raise the height two feet. But, you know, little tweaks like that. Evan and I talked about pervious versus impervious surfaces. You know, what does that mean? A few, a couple of people asked me before the meeting, should I worry? Do I need to come? And I said, just, we'll go to the meeting, we'll let you know how it goes, but don't, don't light your hair on fire. But what does that mean? You know, does it mean the driveway has to go? That's one thing. I think a lot of people would be supportive of that as long as there, there weren't problems with people that had wheelchairs or walkers or things like that. I do think that's something we got to think about as we look forward, and whatever that Raise and Replace does, needs to address, you know, an aging community. And quite frankly, it affects my family directly, so I have firsthand experience of that. So I think, you know, there's things like that. I think the impervious stuff, does that mean, you know, my neighbor has to pull out his $40,000 patio that he just put in? I hope not. Does that mean my neighbor has to pull out the fire pity, fire pity poona? It's not very big, but we really need to decide what's really important and what's not. And think hard about, you know, what, how hard you're asking the community to bend here. I think there's one-third rail issue, quite frankly, and that's the footprint. I think telling the community, oh, you've got all of Pompanessett, you can't expand your footprint, is just fundamentally a disaster. I can tell you that Bob and I did not talk to many neighbors about this ahead of time, or you would have had 100 people in this room. It's a major, major issue. I don't know why you think, I don't know why it's needed, but you are, those people that have bought their places, sat in them for decades, and now think they want to start thinking about retiring, aren't going to be able to do it. They're not going to be able to live here, and they're absolutely, are going to feel screwed for a good reason. I think we need to think long and hard. I think there's a lot of ways, and Bob and I have talked about some of this, there's plenty of ways to limit development. Nobody down there likes the mansions, you know, or McMansions. We don't want those. Nobody needs those. I think we all want it to be tastefully developed. My little sister has a 3,000 or 4,000 square foot house behind her and 3,000 or 4,000 square foot house in front of her, and she's 630 feet. If you're going to tell her she can't do anything in her house, she has to sell the house, you're going to destroy the neighborhood. You're going to destroy Pompanessett if you don't let people build their houses. So I think, I, I think what's critical is that we engage, we talk about, how do we do this? What are reasonable limits? What's fair? So people can still live there. I'm just, I, I don't want to see the neighborhood destroyed. It's a fantastic place. It's all of our happy places. And I think some process where we can all talk about it and brainstorm, how do we do it? Is there a square foot cap? Just what do we do so it's fair? But we all accomplish what we're looking to accomplish, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Mike Halloran. I live in Pompanessett on Waiting Place Road. I was lucky enough as a kid to come to Pompanessett in 1952, and I've been in Pompanessett every summer since 1952. I bought my mother-in-law's house, she was a widow, in 2008. My wife and I have lived in Pompanessett year-round since 2011. I read in the Mashpee paper, just casually what was going on, and it gave that example of a 1,200 square foot house with a 200 square foot shed. You could do 1,400 square feet. Well, and also that there was something voted on last year that got a 60%, but didn't get the two-thirds. And so the idea that you're falling back, or somebody is thinking about falling back and not making it for the whole town, but isolating Pompanessett, doesn't seem fair to me. It doesn't seem at all reasonable. And, you know, maybe you'd be able to get a vote of 67 or 70 if it was just Pompanessett because nobody else would be all concerned about it. But what in the world would you be doing to us? It doesn't make any sense that you isolate Pompanessett. Whatever you do in Pompanessett, you have to do in the whole town. It's just not fair. Now, my situation is, I'm lucky enough to have seven kids, and I have three son-in-laws or daughter-in-laws, and I have eight grandchildren. And they love us, we love them, but we're lucky, we have, Pompanessett is a magnet. These kids like to come down and visit with us and stuff like that. But in addition, I'm old. I'm the guy that John was talking about. I'm 68 years old this, excuse me, 78 years old this April. I had a knee replaced in 2022. I had a knee replaced last year. I have a wife that is, has heart issues and a bad left leg and can't do any stairs. And so we have two bedrooms on the first floor that we're going to turn into a master suite for ourselves. And so we're going to replace, I intend to replace that bedroom that we're giving up with a bedroom over what I was going to do, expand, put a two-car garage on the front And so we're going to replace, I, I intend to replace that bedroom that we're giving up with a, a bedroom over what I was going to do, expand, put a two-car garage on the front of my house, and I was going to have a, a ramp in that garage to make it easier for my wife to get in and out of the yard, or when she drives the car, instead of parking in front of the house, she could park in the garage. And over that, I'm going to, I intend to put a, a bedroom. All the things that I'm planning to design, I have a builder and an architect that we've been working together on, are within the footprint of my property. I have a quarter of an acre, and, you know, the side setbacks are 15 feet, and the street to the house setbacks, or street to the garage setback, is supposed to be 25 feet. I'm not going to go outside, I'm, I'm not building a mansion, but I'm building something that is necessary for my wife and I to continue to be able to live comfortably in our home in Papaneset. And it just doesn't, it all seems fair or right that somebody, this team here, is going to try and take that away. But if you try and take it away from Papaneset, and you don't take it away from the rest of the town, you're not doing the right thing. And I, I think that people should be able to do with their property, within the setbacks and the zoning rules, what we thought we had here. And so I was pretty, we've been here since 7 o'clock, pretty impressed with the effort that you folks are putting in, and how difficult some of the issues you have to deal with. But you have to treat the people in Papaneset fair. A lot of us have long history here in Mashpee. We love Mashpee, and we're big contributors to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Can we just, if, if we're going to repeat anything, try not, if you've got something new to say, we'd like to hear it.
Right, so that's my opening line. No, I'm Alan Clapp, and I live on Keelam Way in Papaneset as well. And we've lived there full-time for the last 10, 12 years. My wife's family's been down here since the 1950s, with a half dozen houses and lots and things. So, no, I don't want to repeat all the good stories that they said, but my career has been in, I'm a civil engineer, professional engineer, I've been in land development for a long time. So I think primarily I'd like to volunteer to coordinate or help be part of any meetings, workshops, or that type of thing that you have.
Great.
Regarding that, I'm sure the other folks might want to as well. But I've, I've been a consultant through a lot of different communities, and I've seen different boards and different regulations. I've been a landlord in developing property, and seen them from that perspective as well. And, you know, seeing something where you can't expand a footprint, that seems a little bit onerous. And as Mike said, why only Papaneset? I'm not sure why that is. But for anybody, I mean, you can't expand your home within the current zoning setbacks, doesn't seem fair. There are a lot of ways to minimize these McMansions and so forth, and that's what I'd like to strive for, is, you know, a win-win solution. Because, because as they said, we don't want to see McMansions either. So, but thank you for your time. I don't want to hold, it's very late tonight.
I think we can work something out. We're going to work hard on it. Thank you.
Anyways, thanks for your time.
Thanks, guys.
Don't hesitate to contact me, and John has my contact information as well, if you'd like to. Feel free.
Anyone else?
Nope, that's it.
Everything's been said. We hear you loud and clear.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not going to go back to.
No.
Please, I'm, I'm sure nobody's, nobody's eager.
Dennis is looking at me like, no way. We'll finish that up next time.
Take it over.
The town planner has a, a report. Do you have a report to give, or do you want to?
I do want to, I, I would like to just highlight in particular, I'll do this very quickly.
Number, draft regional housing strategy invitation.
Oh, first the DEP modification, because this is directly germane to
Okay.
Raise and replace discussions.
Okay, tell us.
And so there's an open comment period right now. Mass DEP is proposing changes to the Wetlands Protection Act, specifically the performance standards that apply to land subject to coastal storm flow, the 100-year floodplain. The proposed amendments by the, that the DEP has just published, if adopted, would prevent existing single-family dwellings from expanding their footprint.
Would be what?
In what zone?
Evan, say that again.
Say, I, you choked on those words, what?
The proposed amendments by DEP of the Wetlands Protection Act
Mm-hmm.
Would impact property, that would impact lands subject to coastal storm flowage, properties in the 100-year floodplain. The proposed amendments contemplate memorializing in the Wetlands Protection Act for predisturbed properties, the inability to expand structural footprints. So the state is contemplating this within its state regulations.
When you say predisturbed, you mean that are already built on?
Existing single-family dwellings could not expand. It's unclear how, what the, it's a public comment period, they've just published these proposed changes. I did ask Conservation to produce a memo for us, relative to what the, you know, the totality of the changes are, and what their potential impacts would be. I was not provided with that memo. But I just wanted to identify for you that this is underway. I believe I provided to you by email, or Karen did, a link to the proposed changes alongside the information for submitting public comment. I think, I am going to follow up with Conservation tomorrow, I think it's very important, as we approach the Raise and Replace discussions, a firm understanding of what the proposed changes mean in terms of impact. They may or may not go, obviously this is just a draft, out for public comment. I would imagine significant pushback on such a proposed change. It's quite a substantial deviation from the existing condition. However, please review it, let me know if there are any questions, reach out to the Conservation Department, they've looked at this more deeply than I have. And I'll hopefully be able to follow up to something, with something more clear for you at your next meeting, but I wanted to make sure you were well aware of that is under discussion at the DEP level.
So this is in lands subject to coastal flow, or?
Yes. There are, there are additional changes contemplated, relative to stormwater management and things like that.
Okay.
And the totality of those proposed changes, it will be identified in the webpage I forwarded.
Okay.
But most importantly, I think, is the proposed changes that impact the floodplain.
The floodplain, okay.
LCSF, LSCSF.
All right.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes, sir, you want to make a, you want to come up to the microphone?
For our viewers at home.
John Boy. This, I know, Evan, you and I chat a little bit, and I, I met with Drew, and Drew showed me where all this stuff was, so I'm trying to get caught up on that, too. And I have Woods Hole Group supposedly looking at the same thing. But would it be possible, obviously something, these regs have a major impact on, on the town, Papaneset, you name it.
Yeah.
The spit. Do you know, happen to know if anybody's looking at it from the town in relation to the spit? Let's see if there's any impacts there.
I didn't specifically ask that of Conservation, but I will follow up them to see if they can provide an opinion in that regard.
That'd be great. Yeah, I'd love to hear what they think, and then I'll, you know, I'll show you, share whatever I get out of Woods Hole, but we should compare notes on that.
Understood.
And then, on something like this, obviously it would have a massive impact on Papaneset, lots of other places around the state.
Yes.
It's quite a reach for the town, for the, the state.
The state, yeah.
Quite a change in strategy there. Is this something that you're going to look at and take a view? Is this something that we could talk about and, and discuss the impacts of Papaneset, just so we understand what you think the impacts are? Because obviously, we already talked about why it's a problem, aging community, all that stuff. The same people are going to get screwed if, if this goes through.
The state does the change.
And I could certainly foresee, I mean, step one would be to just understand what the implications are.
Step, yeah. So for step one, yes, I, I'm on that issue. I do know that the Conservation Department and/or Commission is intending on providing comment. I don't have a substantial enough grasp of what the proposed changes are to really dive into it tonight with the planning board. I can't recall what the submission deadline is, but we certainly need to consider this in relation to Raise and Replace and, and
Oh, absolutely.
Other impacts around Papaneset.
Yeah, there's 130 pages of comments.
Yeah.
Never mind the regulations, so it's a nightmare to try and understand it.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Where am I? Sorry. Cognitive function declining.
It happens.
There's no harbor management plan update, housing production plan. Oh, the draft regional housing strategy was provided to stakeholders for, for comment. I heard from a few folks and noticed myself that the regional housing strategy contemplates, or recommends various zoning strategies, just as our HPP does, specific to each of the 15 Cape Cod towns, Mashpee included, obviously. And some of the recommended strategies are, are, I'd say, in conflict with some of the strategies that were prioritized or voted on by this board and the select board in our joint meetings for the HPP. So I just put together a draft memo, really as a means to enumerate to the Cape Cod Commission what those conflicts were, not necessarily with a request for them to change anything, but they're going to be receiving a final draft of our HPP, and I want them to be aware of the, our, of the current regulatory board's difference of opinion relative to the prioritization of these strategies. That draft is in your packet, I believe, and I intend to submit it as presented unless there is comments that the board would suggest I include by the 19th, which I believe is the deadline.
I, I just want to say, because I asked the question when we had the joint meeting with the SB, and that was, does Cape Cod Commission have any jurisdiction over this? No, this is a state, HPP is a state program, so they're the ones who approve what we write, is that correct?
That's correct. You know, the regional, the strategies in the regional housing strategy are not obligations by the town.
So, really, I mean, I'm not concerned what, if, if that's the case, what Cape Cod Commission wants to write. On page 82 of their local recommendations and proposed, I'll just read you the top. Add a town-wide inclusionary zoning bylaw. That sounds good.
That links with what is in the HPP.
Correct.
Yeah. Allow mixed use by right in commercial districts, allow multifamily by right with design guidelines along main transportation corridors with planned sewers, allow duplexes and triplexes by right in residential districts. That's what they want to do, and that is somewhat
Not necessarily what they want to do, but it's their recommendation.
Their recommendation to us.
Yeah, but we don't have to follow their recommendation.
Right, but I think we need to tell them that, that third one, like, we contemplated it and said no to it.
Right.
And I think that's what you need to report.
Is it not in there? I don't even remember what I wrote this point.
You wrote it, I think it's, I think it's fine. This is what we
Well, I think you, you should, you should know that you're reporting on it.
Right.
Like, if you say, I am providing as public comment, well, you need to say that you're reporting what happened at the meeting, and that the third, the third recommendation by the Cape Cod Commission in the, the regional housing strategy, we struck from the HPP. And that's the, I think that's the point, that they should, they should put in what we put in for our zoning recommendations, not theirs, but ours.
I, I don't agree. I think we're telling, we're telling them right here in this memo what we have, we used the word contemplated, I, zoning strategy contemplated in the update. I mean, contemplated, I, I don't know about that word, but this is what we talked about, and this is what the SB and PB agree to.
Right, and I think that they should match that in the regional, the, on the page in their, in their county strategy, they have a page for Mashpee zoning. They should use what we recommend, not what they recommend, but what we recommend.
I just think that, you know, as we've kind of contemplated before with other, you know, DRIs, for example, the Commission's obligation, as you're all aware, is, is to address regional needs. And so they specify zoning strategies for each town that would address the regional need, some of which we can accept, some of which we can modify, some of which we can reject. But, you know, if I'm, if I'm a professional planner at a regional agency, making recommendations, it would be consistent based on the need, upon the community engagement and the needs assessment that they've conducted. And so I, I want to just make them aware of how you voted, identify the conflicts, but I, I don't necessarily think it necessarily appropriate to suggest they modify it, because we reject some of the opinions.
If the town, if they have a town, if they're proposing something for this town, a zoning recommendation, and we have said no to it, we should tell, that they're asking for public comment. We should report to them that the town rejected their, one of their bullets for zoning, we should tell them we rejected it. Here, pick the ones that we, we approved. They're looking for public comment from us. They put it out there for public comment. If we don't make public comment, they're going to think that we agree with everything that they have. We don't. One of the points matches perfectly with what we've done, inclusionary zoning. One of them we've already rejected.
I mean
The other one is by right, we'd probably like it by special permit, but we should ask them to include these on that zoning page.
Well, we're telling them, they're talking about the whole region, and you're, you know, okay, maybe they're wrong about what they're saying in Mashpee, but why would we have to tell them? They have nothing to do with us in this.
They have so much to do with us, they could require this in the LCP, that our LCP jives with this. They haven't said it officially, but they have pages in the back of zoning for each town. So I think that we should have their, the zoning page for Mashpee match what's in our HPP, our draft HPP. We're not telling, they work for us, we're not telling them what to do, they work for us. I know you guys don't agree with me, but this is important, these people worked really hard on this, and they deserve to know that we looked at it, we thought about it, and that we feel their zone, their, their bullets for recommending, recommendations of zoning for Mashpee fit our locally recommended ones.
I just think paragraph two covers it of my memo.
Paragraph two.
But, you know, this is my memo for my department, that I wanted to notify you about. If you'd like me to modify it, I, I would be willing to do that upon request of the board.
I think you should report what, what was voted on. Yeah, I think that they should consider putting our four zoning recommendations in their plan. What, it, it jives.
It doesn't matter, we're telling them what we think, what the hell.
Yeah.
I mean
Encourage them to include this.
They may not, they may not want to do it, but why not tell them?
Tell them to include this in the, on their page. That's what you do. You say, oh, I read your plan, omit number one, go with number two, add these.
We probably can't demand anything, but we certainly want them to know.
I don't, I mean, I don't know.
At this point, doesn't hurt to let them know.
I mean
I hear you.
I thought when I sat at that board meeting that the Cape Cod Commission was the law on this, and once I realized it was a state that we, we answered to.
The LCP needs to be consistent with the regional policy plan. The housing production plan isn't reviewed by the Commission.
Yeah.
But we're putting all the HPP stuff, the zoning stuff about housing into the LCP. It's all connected, we, it, it's
But it, it doesn't hurt to put it in.
I'll add one sentence at the bottom. My last sentence is, as such, we wanted to make sure the Commission was made aware of why some of these strategies are infeasible at this time, and suggest that the Commission amend this page 82 to be consistent with the strategies enumerated in our housing production plan update.
Okay, that'll do it.
Everyone good?
Zoning strategy.
Zoning strategy.
I don't want you to have to rewrite this whole thing.
No.
I'm going to add one sentence.
Good. That's great, that's exactly it.
That's what I will do.
Okay.
Thank you.
You'll fix that.
Good job, Evan, good job getting that right.
You got it.
All right, let's go home.
Okay.
Why leave?
Until next time, I will complete my part in 10 minutes, and then you shall speak.
Next, next meeting.
The next meeting.
Do you keep an eye on
At the end of the night, when we start.
The, the most recent amended draft elements of the plan are also included, they're enumerated on the agenda. There aren't major changes, in my opinion, that need to be had, but it's been so much time since we first drafted them that there are data updates that need to occur.
Yeah. Oh, that's what these
Maybe you should avoid using things like 414,000 is the median house price, or something like that, because, you know, could you say, as at this date, the median
I, I need to, I, there's a bunch of data that needs to be updated.
It's the one that jumped out at me.
Like a fair amount, mostly pertaining to municipal facilities and services. Staffing levels have changed, funding has changed, I mean, there's a fair amount that, it's not made, it's not going to be a significant amount of work, but I just wanted to identify for you that that's, the updates that need to occur, and ask you to put your eyes on it for anything of, of substance that's of concern that is beyond data point changes that have, that need updating just because of
I'm going to need some time on that, because I'm still concentrating on the implementation
I'd say the implementation table's the most critical. You've seen the, those chapters a bunch of times, not much has changed. But I wanted to keep your eyes on it so that you're fully, get your eyes on the prize, you know what I mean?
What topics are we covering next time? What do you have, Mike?
I have, wait, I have.
Municipal services.
Municipal buildings.
Oh, municipal facilities. Is anybody else going to join the fun?
Who else was going to?
Pardon me.
Did anybody else volunteer to cover another topic?
Yeah, I can do natural resources.
Oh, of course.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
And I guess we have time, water resources as well.
Natural resources and what's the other one?
Water resources.
I mean, two at a time is, I think, a nice chunk. I mean, it took an hour and a half to get through housing.
Yeah, no, we can't.
It took another hour to get through.
Why don't you just do natural resources and you do municipal, what is it called, municipal?
Facilities?
Don't overburden yourself.
Municipal buildings and facilities.
Facilities, et cetera.
It's too late. It's completely too late.
Okay.
All right, so when are we going to do these? At our next meeting?
Yes.
Which is?
February seventh, I believe.
So I got some time.
Are we going to come in at five-thirty again?
Oh, please, no.
No, wait.
Anything else on the agenda?
On the seventh?
Yeah.
No. Nothing, nothing out of the ordinary.
Willow Bend.
Willow Bend is not until the twenty-first.
February.
Twenty-one, right?
Twenty-one. Do you want to talk about anything else under your report, Evan?
On the, tonight?
No.
I don't even remember what's on it.
My brain already left this building.
Karen, what else is on it?
We've been here for five hours.
I know.
Harvard Management Plan, HPP. Last thing is just HPP, quickly.
Yeah.
Presented to the Affordable Housing Committee on Tuesday nights, subsequent to the two joint meetings.
You have to speak about that.
I'd say it was, you know, it generally went well. I mean, the committee is happy with the plan mostly. They want to see us produce an executive summary to, front-loaded on the plan to just, you know, communicate to readers the major points of concern and strategies in the plan in a few pages. They discussed in some length the vote by each of your boards to strike the then-proposed Strategy Nineteen relative to inviting discussions with the requisite agencies who have authority over the Comprehensive Watershed Management Plan as a strategy to address the barrier that is created by our current, the assumptions made in that 2015 plan. I think some of the members had concern over the elimination of that strategy and wanted to, I believe they voted on drafting and submitting a memorandum to the Select Board, presumably your board as well, to enumerate their opinion on that particular subject to invite further discussion on that topic.
And ask the Select Board to convene the Select Board, the Planning Board, and the Sewer Commission to talk about that point. How does, how does the flow, like, the flow neutral bylaw, how does that interact with housing production? How does the Comprehensive Water Management Plan? Does that, what found, what limits does that put forward on housing production? And how do we deal with that?
I think, yeah, I think there's two, few critical points in that, you know, there's variance provisions in the flow neutral bylaw further there. The flow neutral bylaw, I believe, can be waived under a Chapter Forty-B permit. The lack of clarity, I think, for the town to evaluate further is if we are to continuously issue comprehensive permits or vary the requirements of flow neutral, is there a potentially detrimental impact on our zero percent SRF financing for wastewater? That's an open-ended question. I think for the Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee in particular, such discretionary constraints that a clear pathway forward for the projects impose to developers or impart to developers a certain amount of risk that they may not want to participate in. And it might make our RFPs less advantageous for them to consider responding to. I am getting tired, so I'm not sure I'm communicating this very well.
No, it's perfect.
That's good.
You did good.
I want to ask you, is the idea to have a special meeting, is it off? Because that's what you suggested.
Oh, I don't, truthfully, I'm not sure I understood it the same as Mary did. Because the strategy itself that they contemplated striking was about that issue. But maybe I got it wrong. I just.
Alan's going to write the memo.
He's going to write the memo.
He's going to write the memo to John Cotton.
And I'll know what to do from there. But in the meantime.
We might reconvene to talk about that. I mean, we have the draft HPP.
Yeah, in the meantime, Alexis and I are going to write the executive summary and I think compile the plan as it's been voted on by the Planning Board and Select Boards to go for public comment and begin capturing that feedback. As, and we did amend our agreement with Barrett until June to make sure we get this done. I don't want to take all of the time, but ultimately, we want to make sure we resolve this problem collaboratively.
So what are you saying? We're waiting for memos from them before?
I'm waiting for them to memorialize their opinion on this topic and make certain requests in written form for the board to consider prior to you adopting the plan.
But you're going to put it out for public comment.
I believe I, I intend on putting out for public comment, yes.